Call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. We'll stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Great. All right, and we have Mr. Baker remote. So if you could just state your name, location, and if there's anyone in the room with you.
Jim Baker. I'm in a private home in Sun City Center, Florida. And there is one other person in the room.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have action on the minutes for January 4th, 2023? Motion to approve. Second, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We're all, it's so weird today. I don't have anybody over there. All right. We'll get to manifest documents in a minute. Actually, I can pass them around and sign them last.
JJ, you are still somebody.
Well, you are. Just, I didn't mean it like that.
Somebody didn't mean.
I just, I'm calling names.
It's gonna be a long night.
Oh, Lord.
I didn't count either, JJ. She pointed to the right. Matt and I are with you.
I mean, I get to go home, or?
Um, okay, no nominations, no resignations. Uh, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a letter that I'll be putting in the newspaper tomorrow, um, for publication next week that I wanted to read to the community. Dear community, I hope this letter finds you well in the new year. I'm writing to provide you some information in context for the upcoming deliberative session on February 8th for the Sanborn Regional School District. We've worked hard in my six-year tenure to balance the needs of the taxpayers with the needs of the students. In order to personalize this information, we conducted an analysis of school funding for one house in Newton and one house in Kingston over an eight-year period. We noticed some interesting things when we conducted this analysis. The house in Newton had a decrease of $7 over the eight-year period, a decrease of .015% annually for a house valued at $305,400 in the most recent valuation. So that means that over the last eight years, despite the ups and downs of the pandemic and all the different things that have gone on, the total change in the tax bill for the school portion of the tax bill was a decrease of $7. Um, and anecdotally, I did a second house and it was an increase of a couple hundred dollars. So there is some variance when you look at different houses. But I just want to be clear that we chose two houses. The second house in Kingston, there was an increase of $229 over the same eight-year period, or an increase of .55% annually. A total increase of 4% on a house valued at $319,500. It's important to recognize that tax rates go up and down, but the pandemic in particular caused us to give back a significant sum of money at the end of one year, which lowered the tax bills, and then they came back up. But when you look at it over an eight-year period, it's been relatively level for the school portion. During the analysis, we found these numbers to be really surprising. And as with any analysis of a sample, some houses will show a larger increase in taxes and some houses will be less. The analysis, what did focus on an eight-year span? And if any community members have any questions about the analysis or about the school portion of their tax bills, please feel free to contact Matt Angel at mangel, that's with two L's, A-N-G-E-L-L, at sau17.net. Mr. Angel's happy to assist anyone with analyzing their tax bills if they're struggling to do that. Um, as a side note, it was pretty cool. He pulled it up on his computer. He pulled up the house. You could see a picture of the house, the address, all the information, and he did it really, really quickly. So we do want people to ask. Um, it's important to stress those changes are on the school portion of the tax bill. There are many other parts of the tax bill. In addition to working to keep the spending reasonable, we've worked hard to improve our, the academics in our schools. We've implemented an extensive academic intervention program in all the schools, and we are starting to see excellent results, particularly at the Bakey School. Our analysis of targeted, nationally recognized, and independent assessment data shows that many of our first and second grade students are demonstrating knowledge and ability in literacy and math at or above grade level expectations set by the school board strategic plan. This growth is exciting considering the impact of the pandemic on early learning and the fact that over 20% of our children need specialized instruction. At the high school level, we focused on course offerings by moving to a 24-credit diploma, and we've made changes to the master's schedule so that students attend math, science, English, and social studies classes daily. We've also changed the grading practices by implementing a 100-point scale with letter grades while increasing the accountability for students with firmer deadlines for assignments. At the district level, we've participated in the first stage of our recurring 10-year accreditation process and increased our focus on data-driven academic decision-making. In addition to supporting teachers, we've been providing professional development for all of our administrators. That includes communication tendencies, problem-solving, community relationship building, and trust. And the school board has been focusing on improving academic outcomes and the district culture. Yeah, I have to say that as the superintendent this year has been the most encouraging year since my time starting here. Um, the outreach the board has done to the staff and community has really made a big difference in the way it feels at the schools. Thank you. This budget season has been incredibly difficult. We faced many challenges, including inflation and staffing shortages. Despite these challenges, we've worked hard to bring a budget to the public that is fair and reasonable. In our initial budget analysis, we estimated the need to be close to an 8.5% increase. Our team met regularly. We sharpened our pencils. And after many public meetings with the school board and budget committee, discussions, and tough decisions, we are now presenting a budget that is a 3.7% increase for next year, $1,391,239. And the operating budget is $27,882 below the default budget. The budget includes voter-approved, contractually obligated increases for professional staff, teachers, support staff, which includes paraprofessionals and secretaries, administrators, and other staff. The budget also includes some legally obligated increases for special education programs and students. These requests are absolutely necessary for the district to function. And in light of the increasing costs of utilities and related services, we will continue to use every dollar efficiently. We recognize that the school is a significant portion of the taxes you pay. And considering the impact inflation has had on everyone, we have worked hard to manage as much as possible without asking for more. In addition to the budget, we have included a warrant article for capital expenditures and another for increases in utilities such as heating oil. We thought it would be best to be transparent and ask you to approve these costs separately so that we can give you the most accurate picture of what we are asking for. Overall, this is an exciting time for the Sanborn Regional School District. On behalf of the school board, the budget committee, the district-wide administrative team, and our wonderful educators and staff, I hope you can join us Friday, February 8th at 7:00 PM in the Sanborn Regional High School Auditorium to support the students by supporting the budget in the warrant articles we have presented. Uh, sincerely, me, but also the administrative team that helped craft this letter. So we worked on it together. Um, I do also just want to ask the board to consider moving, um, item 7.3, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey Presentation, up so that the staff could participate in that and then go to their other obligations that they have. And also, could we move up, um, 9.1, the updates on the strategic plan and the school board goals, which I'm happy to say Mr. Rosh will be presenting.
Anyone opposed to moving those?
Okay. Thank you.
Right, uh, then we will move to 7.3, Youth Risk Behavior Survey Presentation. Let me take me just a minute. Oh, I'm gonna move. What happens when you run out of room, Heidi?
I don't, I, I'm going back to Mickey Mouse. So if anybody wants my stuff.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. All right. First, I want to say thanks to the, to Tom and the school board for allowing this information to be put onto our agenda tonight. I think it's important. Um, it's going to be tough to hear and tough to see some of these statistics. Um, but I do think it's important and I'm excited and happy to be here because I think we could hide the data and that wouldn't do any good for anybody. Um, I'd also thank the, like to thank the district admin who are here, um, who are obviously here because they support getting this information out to our communities and toward the public um, and their work in continuing to support the staff who are, um, implementing the task that we need to support our kids. Um, I'd also like to introduce Charlotte Scott, who's here tonight, and she is from the Southern Rockingham Coalition, and that is a prevention and education, uh, organization that we work with here at Sanborn. They do a lot to support our kids and to support our staff as we help our kids navigate these tough issues that they're facing. And finally, I want to thank the district counseling team who is here. And they are, they're the drivers of this work. They are there day in, day out. And you'll see some of the things that they are hearing from the kids, from our littlest all the way up to our oldest students. Um, and I'd like them to come up and just say their names and where they work and just to have a second for us to acknowledge them. They didn't know I was gonna do that, so I'm sure they're super excited. But I would love for them to all come up and join me up here. So, counseling team? And then you, yes, yes, and you guys.
I'll make myself your first.
Okay. Hi, I'm Rachel Nippert. I'm one of the school counselors at Memorial School.
I'm Amy Collins, and I'm also at Memorial School.
So Sam gave me the heads up. I've been practicing for the last hour. I'm Kayleen Fraser. I'm the district social worker.
Zach Barker at the high school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Brett, high school counselor.
Bob Hatzmanola, specially counselor at the high school.
Uh, Jenna Grossman. I am a high school counselor.
Julie Conroe, and I'm also from the high school.
Yay for them because they really are working hard. Um, they're exhausted, and so to be here at 6:30 at night is, um, I think just a testament to how much they value this work and making sure that everybody understands what's really happening for our kids. And obviously, I'm sure they would love it if anybody would ask them questions at the end also. All right, uh, so our objectives for tonight is first to share out the data from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Um, this is, we'll talk a little bit about what that survey is. Um, our other objective is to let you know a little bit about what is going on in our district to manage those crises, manage those mental health, um, issues that are coming up for our kids. Uh, we want to let you know a little bit about our response to the behavior concerns that we're seeing. And most importantly, to talk about how the school board and the community can continue to support the efforts to improve behavior outcomes for our kids. This information can be really hard to hear and, um, but I think it's important for the story to be told so we can see truly what our kids are bringing to the table every day um, and what they're able to do as we're asking them to do school. Right, so prime first, we're going to talk a little bit about the YRBS. And this is, uh, it's the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, because I know we don't like acronyms. Um, and it is put out every year from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. It's a high school survey. Uh, 67% of our students took that, um, survey. It was done in 2021 in the fall, was it fall or? Fall of 2021.
Actually done in the fall.
Yep. Um, we had 69 other high schools in the state of New Hampshire who took the survey. It's a self-administered anonymous 106-item questionnaire that looks at some of the topics that you see, uh, on the screen there. Um, it's anonymous, it's voluntary participation, and parents have to opt their students into this survey. So we can't give the survey unless parents allow us to. Um, which I think you need to, when we look at the numbers and we look at the data, we have to keep that in our mind because who are the kids who are going to sit for 106-question survey, right? Who are the students whose parents are going to say, yes, this is okay? Um, who are the kids who are going to be able to get to school to be able to do this? Um, so that may not be, uh, we don't know this for a fact, so I, I have to just report the facts. Um, but thinking about that information, the students who may be most at risk and most impacted by some of these topics were probably not sitting at the table taking this survey. This data is used to direct grant money throughout the state, um, and it also is used to drive our decisions here in Sanborn. Um, so as I said, these figures are shocking. These figures are challenging to accept, and oftentimes, we don't want to think about them. Um, when we look at this data, this looks at our depression and suicide rates. And I think it's easy to look at the percentages, but what I would like you to do is look at those starbursts. That's 36 students. That's 36 kids who you know, who you've coached, who have sat next to your children, maybe at birthday parties when they were little, um, who are at those concerts that we all love to attend. 36 of our students attempted suicide last year. 117 of our students made a plan about how they might attempt suicide in the past 12 months. And 141 of our students can seriously considered. If we look at just those top two numbers, that's 153 of our students. I know some of you have, I've been in this district a long time, and I've tended many funerals for our kids. And I can't imagine attending 153 funerals. One is too many, but 153 kids were really at risk last year. Um, it's important to remember that these are, as I said, these are numbers. They're not numbers. These are students. These are real kids. Um, and if you look at this data, the blue bars are Sanborn's data. The orange bar is the New Hampshire data. And we also put information up there over the course of the year, so you can compare year to year because we have taken the YRBS. We've had our kids take the YRBS since 2017. So the light blue number at the bottom is 2017. The medium blue number is 2019, and then the darker blue number is 2021. And you can see from these bars that Sanborn is either at the state average or.
Yeah, just, maybe you said it. I apologize. Why was there no 20 to 18 data?
Um, they administer it every two years. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep looking to my team.
Okay, and thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is 2017 the year we started doing it, or just we're only going back just so much?
I believe 2017.
We did.
We did?
Okay. All right, thank you, Charlotte.
Okay. So when kids are really sad and not getting the support that they need, what, what does that look like? So for high school kids, oftentimes, they'll mask those emotions, um, with substance use. And that's what this slide, this slide will, uh, indicate for you. Um, they're masking that pain that they're experiencing. So again, if we look at those numbers, 85 of our students in the past 30 days are using a. Um, some of them are, I think, ones that when we first saw this data, 13 students have used heroin once or more times in their lifetime. 19 of our kids have tried meth one or more times during their lifetime. 31 students have taken a prescription drug without that prescription being for them during the last 30 days. And these same colors are as previous. So orange is New Hampshire and blue is Sanborn. And you can see, again, we are far above in some instances the New Hampshire average. Uh, the news isn't all bad. Um, this slide captures some improvements in our schools around substance use from 2017 in gray, 2019 in orange, and 2021 in blue. Through your support and through the budget, we've been able to have a student assistance counselor here at Sanborn. That person has worked with both the high school and the middle school students. And we've also been able to develop a partnership, an increased partnership with SO rock. They're actually housed right here in our, uh, school, so we can access them easily and readily, and we do. So here we're seeing the impact from the many assemblies that we've been able to hold through the partnership with SO rock and having this assistance counselor here, uh, the small groups, the class lessons, the school-wide interventions. We've made progress, but we still have much more room to go. Okay. Yep.
I just, I, I know that there's a lot of really hard issues here, but that bottom one is really important. Tried marijuana for the first time before 13 years of. Could be way worse, but it could be better.
Mm-hmm.
Really important.
Those are kids before, yeah, before they hit high school.
Forty-eight, forty-eight, forty-eight kids before the age of 13. Alcohol.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm surprised that marijuana is so low, given that all the states are promoting. And again, that was, that was more positive one, but it's still not, I want it to be zero. But I just want, didn't want to miss it.
Yep. The survey also looks at the relationships that our kids are having. This slide shows the harrowing numbers of sexual violence that our students are reporting. As much as we adults might want to think about it, we do know that high schoolers are in the developmental stage of beginning to form sexual relationships. It needs to be all our jobs to ensure that we're teaching appropriate boundaries to our kids. And that can't start in high school. That has to start at, at Bakey. That has to start with our youngest kids with teaching them, how do they say no when someone's doing something that they don't like? And if I think, if you look at the, um, 9% of our students is 37 students. So if you look at that, that bottom graph there, so 37 students are walking through the high school, um, expected to attend school every day, uh, having reading and math and doing well on the SATs when they've experienced a rape. So again, that's 37 students at the high school. I know that, um, we recently hung up the signs in all of the bathrooms for Haven, which is an organization that supports sexual assault victims. And within the first three days, I noticed the bathroom that I most frequently use, there were tags, there were four tags taken off of that bathroom. That's a single-stall bathroom. So whether that's some of our students who feel most safe in a single-stall bathroom, it might be staff, um, but it, four tags were taken in the first four. Again, these are issues that our kids are facing that I think would bring many adults to their knees. This slide is, is about the bullying, and in New Hampshire, New Hampshire has, the legislature has a very explicit definition of bullying. And I don't think many of our kids know exactly what that bullying definition is. So when I read this slide, when I look at this data, I'm looking at this more through the lens of thinking, this is the number of kids who don't feel safe. This is the number of kids who feel that someone's been really mean to them. Mean enough to, that it's, it's on their mind. This is something that they're reporting. This isn't just a one-off comment someone has made. This is ongoing, kind of feeling like they don't belong here, feeling that they don't want to go to school because they don't feel safe. And we see those numbers. We see that many of our students aren't coming to school in the past 30 days because they don't feel safe. And we have to ask ourselves, how can we ask students to focus if they feel they aren't being treated well by their peers when they're trying to fit in with their peers? We know that that's, that's so important for high school kids. That's their primary objective is to fit in with their peers. And if they don't feel that they do, and they don't feel safe, how can we possibly expect them to do well in school? We know our kids don't exist in a bubble at school, and many of our kids, as I said, carry burdens that would put many of the adults in this room out on a leave from their job. Um, we would ask to, to stay home to be able to take care of business, and yet we continue to ask them to come to school and do well um, and do what, sit down and do what we ask them to do. Um, I think this slide speaks to the challenges that our kids are bringing to school every single day. So we have 207 of our students who are saying that they feel like they don't have an adult that they can talk to about their feelings. Uh, 49 of our kids are, are dealing with a parent or caregiver who's in, currently in prison. 239 of our students are dealing with someone or living with someone who has mental illness. Or a parent who is possibly suicidal. 183 of our students are living with someone with a substance abuse problem. 9% of our kids are living with family member who's serving in the military, and when we look at that statistic, we have to think of the loss and the anxiety if you have a family member who's stationed somewhere where it's not safe. That child's coming to school every day, thinking and worrying about that caregiver. And 98 of our students on, on the regular basis are put down, sworn at, insulted by someone who's supposed to be caring for them. So again, think about as an adult, having to go to work every day, carrying one of these issues. And some of our kids are carrying multiple of them. All of these factors impact our students' wellness. So I think we can all take a deep breath, right? This is tough stuff, right? And I'm looking around and I'm seeing the, the expressions of people, and when we first, I've looked at the state of a number of times, and it's still, it's jarring to me thinking about who my kids are, who are walking around next to me every day, who, um, yeah, they're throwing carrots at each other in the lunchroom. Um, but then, okay, what are they, what's really going on? What's, what's happening here for our kids? Uh, so we have to take a minute and think about that, and, but those are just the high school numbers. The, the YRBS data just gives us a snapshot in black and white of what's happening at the high school. These high school kids used to be our middle school kids, who used to be our elementary school kids. These kids didn't come to high school and just all of a sudden start dealing with these issues. We know that these issues are, are happening for our youngest kids. We've all seen recently in the news, the six-year-old who shot his teacher. This is not happening just here at Sanborn, um, and it's happening at a younger and younger age. Our kids are really, really struggling. Our youngest learners are struggling. So we can talk a little bit about what the data looks like for them. So this data that I'm going to talk about now is coming from QuickBase. Um, I, we talk, have talked here at this group before, uh, about the systemic care grant. And the systemic care grant has required our counselors to enter data into a system called QuickBase, so that's where this data is, um, captured. This is the just for 22, 23, um, for acute crisis management. So when I speak to acute crisis, those are those crises that are not just a, a little argument in a classroom or a student refusing to do their homework or dropping a pencil on purpose. These are the significant crises. So these are fighting. This, these are kids who are running away from school. Extreme emotional dysregulation. So those tantrums that you remember from a toddler, those are those tantrums happening in the schools. Just this school year up until, uh, January 1st, we've had 83 crisis interventions with 63 different students, which has resulted in 65 lost student hours and 176 staff hours. This num, these numbers don't reflect the amount of time that goes into, this is just dealing with the crisis itself. So this doesn't reflect the amount of time that our counseling staff and our administrators and our support staff are spending on, uh, data entry, our spending on contacting the police and working with DCYF to make sure that the kids are safe. Um, it doesn't reflect, um, any parent phone calls and any parent meetings that are happening afterwards to plan to how can we prevent this from happening again. And as you can see on the left side where it says crisis type, the highest amount of crises are extreme emotional dysregulation with 37 incidents for 29 hours. Danger to self with 17 incidents for 16 and three-quarter hours. This slide here speaks to, uh, our increased partnerships with our community mental health centers. Uh, in Sanborn District, we work with two, uh, community mental health centers because we have three towns. So we partner with Seacoast Mental Health Center, who supports our students from Kingston and Fremont, and Center for Life Management, which, who supports our students from Newton. Um, a facilitated referral is when you think about a hand-over-hand referral to make sure um, that the student receives the support that they need. If you think about a family that's dealing with a student who's in crisis, maybe a student who's said to their parent, I want to die. I want to kill myself. I don't want to be here anymore. Can you imagine as a parent what that feels like? And then saying to that parent? And then saying to that parent, here's a phone number. Why don't you call them and get some support? That's not what we can do anymore. We have to help parents to be able to navigate that system. So we work with the families to make sure that they, when they, when they have that phone number, that we give them a person to call. We have somebody who calls them. We've developed, worked really hard to develop those partnerships so that we can support the families as they make these mental health referrals. Last year, we had thirteen of those facilitated referrals. This year, we had eighteen so far this year. This is not counting the private practitioners. So many of the school counselors have developed relationships with private practitioners who might be familiar with, or might be an expert in the area of adoption, or might be an expert in the area of attachment disorders or anxiety or grief. And so this is just our referrals to mental health centers. It's not counting those private practitioners who we're also referring kids to, who are very specialized here. Another indicator of the struggles our students are facing is truancy. When they can't come to school, they don't. Or for our littlest learners, if their caregiver is struggling with mental health issues and can't get them to school, maybe doesn't wake them up, can't get them dressed, can't get them to the bus, they don't come to school. You can certainly see that our numbers of truancy have increased significantly since COVID. And I think this is, this is obviously something we're concerned about. But I think eight percent of our students meet that federal definition for chronic truancy. And it's, I think it's just continues to get worse. And as we know, since COVID, our kids have had a difficult time re-engaging in school. And if our kids aren't in school, how can we possibly support them? How can we give them academic interventions? How can we give them emotional support and wellness interventions?
Question?
Yep.
So the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty numbers were significantly lower. Did we stop tracking during the lockdown?
That is a great question. I bet that attendance numbers were significantly impacted. I can't speak to what individual teachers did, but I would imagine that how you decided a student was present or at what point they were present was probably very different than when they were sitting right in front of you in class.
Yeah, I bet a lot of kids showed up to school that didn't normally.
It, it's a complicated question, but there are people who might join a Zoom call that weren't coming to school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I can't definitively, I would say that's an anomaly that we should.
Significant.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, that's a slight increase from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, but so.
I would look at it more in an overarching and kind of, that data for that year is going to be.
But I am significantly concerned. We're at seven point nine percent.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you, Heidi.
Sure. We do have an amazing counseling team here in the district. And because of your support and through the budget, we've been able to maintain a relatively large counseling staff for a district of our size. And the, these counselors, they're busy, they're running, they're like the ducks. They are amazing. They look, they're calm, cool and collected. They're supporting the staff, they're supporting the administrators and underneath their feet are paddling because they are running ragged. And these are the issues that are presenting in their office. And if you can, I know it's real, it's really tiny data. But you can see that the, the biggest issues are not academic concerns, right? The, the students are showing up because of social and friendship concerns, that emotional dysregulation, being able to manage themselves, internalizing behaviors is more anxiety, it's depression. It's, it's trauma-related issues, it's, it's flashbacks. And then we, we see the attendance or the academic concerns being as a, an issue that our counselors are dealing with. But we see kids, they're helping kids, support kids with everything from gender identity and sexual orientation, self-harm, substance misuse, grief and loss. And again, if you go back to remembering that, these are the kids who are coming to school, right? We've got eight percent of our kids who are probably, I, I would guess, would add to these numbers.
Heidi, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The totals here add up to more than one hundred percent. Could you just explain how you got the percents?
Those are.
When, when your, a kid is referred to you, so they could come for self-harm and social concern.
Okay, so they can double. Okay, thank you.
Makes sense.
So when we think of younger students, younger students tend to act out their behaviors or those feelings, right? Our older students tend to internalize that, that emotional dysregulation more. So when we look at one of the top behaviors of discipline referrals, and this was pulled from what the administrators enter into our student information system, we can see at the younger grades, it's a lot of physical contact. It's a lot of physical aggression. And at the high school, those cell phones. But really with our younger kids, it's that very physical behaviors. And when we think about where our staff are getting hurt, our staff are getting hurt from trying to intervene with those physical aggress- physically aggressive kids. So anecdotally, as I said, our sta- our counseling staff, they're supporting the kids, certainly. They're also supporting the staff. And these are the things that the staff are coming in and talking with them about. We have lots of staff who come in and they're just crying sometimes because they don't know what to do and they want to support the kids. So increased behavioral challenges, increased unsafe behaviors. Students are presenting at a younger developmental stage. I've been in this field for twenty-seven years. The kids who are in front of us today are very, very different than the kids who were in front of me twenty-seven years ago. They're presenting at a much younger developmental stage. The skills and tools that we would use with kids twenty-seven years ago are not the skills and tools that would work with kids now. They're just presenting certainly different since COVID, but I think this has been happening for longer than COVID. There's more need to consult with counseling department to manage concerns. The teachers are really needing that contact with, with experts in the field. When they're taught to be teachers, they're not taught how to deal with a student who has significant trauma. They're not taught, how do, how do you, what do you do if a student is having flashbacks and they're under their chair? And you know that that student is not seeing you as their teacher right there. That's not in teacher one-on-one school. So they're going to the experts, they're going to the counselors. There's not enough time to hold the meetings to discuss all of the students who have these concerns. As you can see, these numbers are tremendous, two, oh, two hundred kids for some things. And the majority of the teachers feel they don't have the tools in the toolbox that they need to support the kids that they're seeing now. They want to. I can tell you, they're desperate for that information. They really want to know how to support kids and help them to be their best. They just don't know how to do it. So again, we can take a breath and think, what are we gonna do? Because this just seems so overwhelming, right? It just seems like, oh my gosh, where do we even begin? I think you may have heard about MTSSB, you've heard that acronym. And I think the easiest way to explain it is MTSSB is a, is a lens through which we look at wellness and student emotional health. And it's, helps us to define and organize the interventions and supports that we provide for kids to make sure that the right kids are getting what they need at the right time. So many of you are familiar with that pyramid of intervention and for academics. So if you look at the left side of this schoolhouse, you can see that that's what, i- when we think of those tiered interventions, the left side is what it might look like for academics. And the right side is what it might look like for emotional wellness. So when we think about tier one, that's the majority of our kids, that's our core instruction. That's our teachers giving lessons every day for academics. And for emotional wellness, it is the school-wide behavior expectations. It's our crisis de-escalation tools that our teachers, some of our teachers at the younger grades have been taught. If we think about moving up to tier two, how do we figure out who tier two kids are? With academics, we do an academic assessment. We might do some of the, we might do NWA tests. And that will give us a picture of who are the kids who need some extra reading assessment. For emotional wellness, we're looking at doing behavioral skills screening. We're looking at having our teachers really think about who our kids are and who are those kids who might need a little bit more. What do we do with academics? We give small group instruction. If a student hasn't mastered a specific skill in reading, we pull them out and teach them that specific skill. The same thing happens for wellness. It's targeted behavior supports and behavioral skills groups. And for our top need, needs kids, our most needy kids, for academics, we're looking at IEPs, we're looking at intensive individualized intervention. Same for wellness, for emotional wellness, we're looking at intensive individualized behavioral health services. That's where those referrals are happening to the community mental health centers. So what does this look like at Sanborn? All of our schools have tiered teams. And all of those teams have administrators on them. They have, they have, they have interventionists, they have counselors, they have teachers. This is a whole school effort, working to help support our kids. At tier one, this looks like those school-wide behavior expectations. All of the, the tier one teams are currently working or are already piloting things to make sure that our kids really know what's expected of them. If they don't know how to do it, we're going to teach it to everybody because even the ones who know it might need a little bit of a refresher. I'm sure my little guy who throws carrots in the lunchroom knows he's not supposed to throw carrots in the lunchroom. So we have to help remind him of that. At the tier one, we're also talking about looking at those data points. We're looking at data from the school counseling office. We're looking at data from the nurse's office. We're looking at that truancy data. We're looking at office discipline referrals and we're looking at academic failure reports. All of that is helping to feed, what, what are we doing for all of our kids across the school? And that is delivered through those morning meetings that you see happening at Bakersfield. They may be focusing on one skill that, based on those data points, we're seeing a lot of anxiety or tummy ache visits to the nurse. What does that look like? Okay, that's a lot of kids who are feeling anxious about taking NWA. Let's talk about how do you deal with when you're anxious? What does anxiety feel like for a little guy? And so tho- those tier one teams are talking about, what are the, what is the data telling us? We're not talking about individual kids at tier one. What is the data telling us about all of our kids? At tier two, that's when we're really focusing on, who are those kids who might need that additional support? The teachers who are recognizing that this student is, has left my class every day for twenty-five minutes and is, is in the bathroom. And their friends are coming in saying that they're crying. Or we have a number of students who are coming in who are talking about anxiety or feeling just dysregulated in the morning and they don't know how to get their day started. Or students who just can't organize themselves in, for the week, to plan for the week, to how to get their work done. Those kids might be in a targeted group to develop those skills, short-term with our school counselors to, to teach those skills so that we can support them and help them return to the baseline functioning. And then tier three kids, that's where we're working with our mental health system. We're facilitating that referral. We might have our social worker do a parent meeting. A parent might be dealing with a student who has recently been diagnosed with an anxiety disorder or a bipolar disorder, and they don't know how to manage, change their household to support that child. So our school social worker might be having those conversations with that parent to do some short-term parent interventions. But again, this is happening across all of our schools, looking at that data that we're collecting and responding to the data so we can support our kids. If we do this with fidelity, if we put those groups together and we're targeting the right kids and we're identifying those kids early enough and getting them in for the supports that they need, the, the change can be tremendous. This is a study that was done at a local New Hampshire school that has been implementing MTSSB for a number of years. This is the hours that they gain due to the decrease in office discipline referrals. So that's what ODR stands for. You can see that the number of student hours that were gained since they started implementing is over nine thousand student hours. That's nine thousand hours spent on instruction. Nine thousand hours where kids are sitting in front of a teacher, learning without having to manage some of the other stuff that they're bringing to the table. And if we look at the number of hours that the administrators, they're gaining back, back almost seven thousand hours. Seven thousand hours where they can be coaching our newest teachers. So we can be looking at not having staff turnover because the teachers are feeling supported because our administrators, who are the experts in teaching, are in the classroom, supporting those people who are brand new teachers. It, it's a win for everyone. What are we continuing to focus on? Implementing MTSSB to fidelity across the district. Looking at those tier one interventions, supporting the whole school community, building those relationships with all of our students. So we know that change happens within relationships and making sure that all of our kids feel that they have somebody who's in their corner that they can talk to, that's not treating them unkindly. Understanding where they're coming from, understanding what, what they may be bringing to the table and continuing to build things to engage them in school. Partnering with our families to celebrate our students' successes, asking for help. We can't be experts on everything. There's too many issues that our kids are facing. And our staff, as amazing as they are, can't be experts in everything. So we, as a staff, are going to continue to ask for help from the experts in the community. There are people who, their only job, as I said, Haven, is to support folks who are dealing with sexual assault, assault and teaching kids how to have healthy relationships. We need to partner more with them because we can't be experts on that. And then continuing to refine our behavior data collection so we can make the best decisions for how to support our kids. As we collect data and we respond to it and our kids are better at one topic, then we can move on to the next. But we don't know that if we're not collecting the data to look at those, those issues that our kids are facing. So those are our goals. So again, I want to thank all of you for allowing this information to be presented. As I said at the beginning, we could hide this. We don't need to stand here and record this for all to see all of the things that are, that our Sanborn kids struggle with. But you guys have chosen not to do that. We, we're putting it in a public manner because what we recognize is that we can't do this alone. This is not just an administrator issue. This is not just the counseling, counselor issue. It's not just a teacher. It's not just a school board issue. This is all of us working together to be able to support our kids. Lost my track of thought. So what, what do we need from the school board? What do we need from the community? Continue. You guys have been amazing. As I said, the, through the budget, through the school board support, we've been able to keep our counseling staff to develop those relationships. We need to continue to support our staff as we develop those relationships with those community resources and the experts. We have Lynn Lyons, who's a local expert on anxiety, speaks nationally. Through this work, we are able to have Lynn come and speak to our parents in April. She's going to be able to work with our staff to teach them, how do you manage students' anxiety in the classroom? What does that look like? Again, that's not a skill that they're taught in teacher school. We need to help them now. And she's going to be spending some time with our counseling staff to really help target our interventions with our most anxious kids. Haven, as I said, having them help to teach our youngest kids those boundaries so that when they are in high school, we're not looking at thirty-seven students walking through the school who've experienced a sexual assault. When we can teach our kids when they're younger to say no and that it's okay to say no and that you can keep your friendships, then we don't, we won't look at that number. We'll see a significantly decreased number. Seacoast Outright is an organization that supports our students who are dealing with gender identity issues. Those are our most vulnerable kids. We didn't even talk about the subsets of populations of students who will commit suicide. Our students who are dealing with gender identity issues are most at risk, more than any other population of adolescents. And continuing to work with our community mental health centers, continuing to allow us to have those partnerships, continuing to support SOWAC and that relationship here at Sanborn. Our professional development day, we've already decided is going to be a follow-up to last year's trainings. Last year, we trained the high school and middle school in youth mental health first aid. And we trained our elementary staff with crisis prevention and de-escalation techniques. In February, we're going to switch that so that our high school staff will have more of that crisis prevention and our elementary staff will start to hear about, what do you do if you have a first grader, a second grader, a third grader who talks about wanting to hurt themselves? And again, I know that's hard to think about, but I can tell you that the counseling staff sitting behind me have dealt with that many times this year with our youngest kids. We have a new family engagement committee. So we are going to be looking to put out activities for families to engage with the school, with local experts and with one another. We, I think the biggest piece of information that I, I hope that this does. We, I think the biggest piece of information that I, I hope that this does is that it brings awareness to our families that you're not alone, you're not the only family that's struggling with mental health issues. You're not the only family that's struggling with some of these family issues that are going on, substance abuse, loss in your family. And we, we all need to be there to come together and we can connect with one another. And removing that isolation and removing that stigma is going to do nothing but help our kids and our families. We are looking to continue to support opportunities to capture data. So can we need school board and superintendent approval to continue to do the youth risk behavior survey? So we will be looking to continue to be able to collect that data. Swiss is a data tool that costs money. And it, but it's a tool that allows us to be able to, the administrators to input data, the counselors to input data on what it is that they're seeing so that we can, can make those data decision, data-driven decisions. And teacher rated screenings for behavior. This is something that in the state of New Hampshire, we need to get permission in. So we, as I think our district, need to figure out our teachers are experts on their kids. And we need to find a way to be able to allow our teachers to give the counseling staff that information. We need to focus on, continue to focus on improving our district culture and climate by listening to the needs of our teachers and staff so that school doesn't feel like an unsafe place, so that it feels like a warm and engaging community. And by doing that, we need to continue to focus on those professional development, classroom management, trauma response, and giving our teachers the resources and the time to talk to one another so that they can use that data to be able to make good decisions for our kids. And finally, we ask that you consider mental health needs while developing the budget, creating policies and making decisions about the district and our kids. We, again, we don't, we can't look at kids as just numbers and I'm not implying that anyone has. And that's why I said, think about those kids who are on your kids' baseball teams. Think about the kids who are coming to your kids' birthday parties, those are the kids that are struggling with these mental health needs. So we just ask that you continue to partner with us to problem solve how we can support the behavioral health needs of our students. And that's what? Any? Does anybody have any questions for me or any of the council staff? Well, Tom, is there anything you want to add?
I think Jamie has his hand up, so.
Just for an information question, we've been posting this on the site.
Yeah, and the, the video from this evening will be a part of the school board meeting video too, so that people can watch the presentation. So our hope is that folks who aren't present, I made some personal phone calls to a few people that I thought needed to watch this presentation, I hope they're watching online or that they'll watch the video and what we can even do is have the tech department make a segment of just this presentation so that we can share that as its own separate link. I think it's, it's good to have the narrative.
You think it's good to have both?
Yeah.
So when you talk about the tiered intervention and whatnot and not being in education, I, I've learned over the last couple of years about intervention from the, from an academic standpoint, though. Kind of when you put it into this tiered intervention for behavioral, it kind of made me understand a little bit better. Is this at all related when we see this big word intervention that we have this big intervention program over the last few years? Are these two totally separate things? Is, is, this is not, so this has nothing to do with the intervention? Okay, and so also there, there's a lot of words like continue, okay, I get that's.
I, I tried to eliminate.
Right, I get that's kind of a vague term, but I, I'm, I'm glad that we're having the conversation and everything like that. It seems like you are feeling like we're supporting, that you guys have the support which you need. Um, I'm just putting this in terms of intervention and saying we supported this intervention program, but we've had trouble staffing it. Are you, are we having the same problem with this intervention? Or am I putting it too much into a box of we need these intervention teachers? For academics, like do we need more intervention behavioral teacher? Like how, do you have the staff, appropriate staff that we need or like?
We could always, we could always love more, but I think we do, I mean, again, as I said, you guys have been great. We have a tremendous, when I talk, go to other districts and I say, I have all of this counseling staff and I don't even think, not everybody's even here. People think I'm so lucky, I was at a conference and I talked to one counselor, he has 900 students on his case.
Oh, Jesus.
How do you even, I wouldn't be able to work there ethically because I could never do that. We've also been fortunate to have a lot of grants. So the M T S S B, the System of Care Grant has been really, I, I think what the impetus for getting us kind of focused, we've had a lot of this in our district in pieces. And through the System of Care Grant, bringing the right people to the table to have these, this is what we're talking about conversations, we've been able to really organize ourselves and focus ourselves. And I think we need to just make sure, as I said, to consider, continue to consider those mental health needs of our kids as we think about budget cuts. As we think about making, I, I get it, heat is crazy, right? And how do we continue to pay the heat and support our kids? And something, where does it have to give? And I just asked that when we're thinking about where's the give, that we're not thinking of eliminating counselor positions because the more we can keep that focus and that intervention at our younger ages, then we can really focus on, I had, I was in a meeting and Jamie was asking about colleges and where are our kids going to colleges and the confidence that it takes to apply to a college that's really, really selective. And we need, we can focus more on that at the high school age if we can continue to focus on helping kids at the younger ages develop the skills that they need so that they're feeling confident and assertive enough to be able to go to those.
Right.
So it's, it's definitely a rapid cycle.
So one thing I want to touch upon, what you said was grants, so some of, I don't know, or some of the staff right now, counselors, what have you, funded by these grants, and at some point, these grants are going to go away.
Absolutely.
Is it a one, two-year grant? So is this something that in a year or two, we need to be aware that the funding is going to have to come from somewhere else, it's now going to have to go into the budget? Because if it doesn't now, th- this is a service that we have now that we're not really paying for because it's being funded by a grant. So we need to be aware in two years that this wouldn't necessarily be a new service, it's just the grant went away, is that?
So I, I'll take that. First of all, I, I, I just want to say, um, thank you to the counselors that are here this evening and thank you for everything that you do. We, having been a guidance counselor myself, I, I know the burden that you bear personally. And there are no words for it, what we saw this evening is just a piece. So thank you, we appreciate you and we're very grateful for what you do every day. I, I'm going to schedule at least an hour on January 27th with the school counseling department to have lunch and talk about next steps. I just want to sit down with them as a separate group, I've done that in the past. But I've done it at the building levels where I meet with them in groups at the buildings, but I'd like to put them together as a district-wide team and have a conversation with them as a united group. The money piece is tricky, so BAKI right now has two full-time guidance counselors, one of them is paid for out of ESER. That money will go away at the end of next year. Memorial also has two full-time guidance counselors, one of them is paid for from the ESER grants. We do have some additional ESER funds that we could allocate to some additional counseling staff for next year. I did use some of those funds to, I, I thought those two positions were going to expire at the end of this year and I was able to, to make it work to do it again for next year. The other positions are in our regular budget, so we're going to need to have a conversation about BAKI and Memorial and whether or not we're going to maintain those two positions. And that will be a part of the budget discussion for next year. The, 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 the biggest thing that, that time costs us money. And what the staff need is time to talk about kids and make plans for kids and work collaboratively to develop solutions. So one thing that we didn't put in these slides is, we've done a lot of work with Dr. Green prior to the last few years. And I, I intend to bring Dr. Green here more in the future, we just felt like this year wasn't the right year because there's so much going on with NEASK and all the different accreditation pieces, we've got to get that behind us. Our staff have a cognitive load problem. And I mean that, that they are fantastic, a cognitive load problem is defined as your brain can only do so many things at one time. And we're asking our staff to do way too many things all at once. And so giving them time to have professional development to process, to just make good, solid plans to help kids is really important. And so we need to figure that out and that's something that the administrative team will be talking about and preparing the calendar for next year. I know that a lot of people don't want to hear it, but one of the number one things that would help us is early release days. They need time to talk. And you can't talk when the kids are in the building running around. You have to do it when they're not there, you can't plan, when you have a relationship with a kid and the kid is having a meltdown, they don't care if you have a meeting with your friend, with your colleagues. They need you right now.
It's 100% correct.
Yeah, and it, so when the kids are in the building, you can't count on anything because it's chaos. They come first.
Manage chaos, but chaos.
Oh, it can be chaos, even slightly unmanaged, and that's okay, we handle it really well. But I'm, I'm not going to sugarcoat it either, it's messy, we're dealing with people, not widgets. Sorry Heather, you had your hand up twice.
So I just wanted to say thank you again to the counseling department. I'll do a tremendous job as a professional in the field, I can relate 100% to what you go through on a daily basis. Um, I've pushed really hard on the strategic plan to have a mental health goal and we don't have one, we have one embedded. But looking at this survey, I really feel like we need to look at our strategic plan and how are we going to focus on the mental health? Because Heidi, you're 100% correct, if a kid is having a trauma response, they're not going to learn math or science. If they're disassociating in the middle of the classroom, if they have, do you know that familial pimping went up 45% during the COVID? We have kids that are being sexually exploited in the school, like we need to focus on the mental health of our kids. Cause they're not going to be able, we're not going to meet our goals of increasing reading, writing, academic if we don't meet the needs of our kids, and I know Mr. Rose is going to talk about what we've been doing on the strategic plan. But this data shows us that we really need to have an objective just for mental health and how we're going to support our kids in this district.
I, I think the strategic plan is a living document, we have a, a few different revisions that we'd like to bring forward to the board. Now that we're living with it, that's the next, we, we structured this on purpose this way, so we, we agree with you.
Okay.
This, this team agrees with you that, that, no, no, I'm, I am too Heather, and, and it's, we, we got a document that we lived with now for six, nine months. We, when you hear the next part of the presentation, it is compelling, the amount of things that have been done. But we are noticing some gaps in the plan that need to be addressed and that's normal. And we want to recommend or work collaboratively with the board and the community to update the plan already. And that doesn't mean that we don't think that, I always like to say to people, it's an and, and situation, not or. You have to have an aligned curriculum, you have to have common instructional practices, you have to have time to talk about the data and what to do to change instruction to make it better on the academic side. But if you don't deal with the social, emotional and mental health needs, you will get nothing done on that side of the house. Nothing.
If someone is dysregulated, you're not going to be able.
Well, not only that, learning requires safety. Because you have, your brain has to be in the right mode to receive. And if you're, you don't feel safe, you literally physically cannot learn.
And if the teachers don't feel safe or don't feel like they have the skills, then they can't teach and they're just like, it's, it's just, it's a cycle.
It's a cycle and we are working hard to break it and it's so nice to be talking about teaching, learning, caring, building community and not masking and whether or not we're going to be open. We are super happy this year. So I couldn't be more grateful for everything you've all done, the outreach that you've done this year. I, I think everybody feels like we're on a positive trajectory, I've gotten incredible feedback, but we're just warming up, baby.
I think Heather, just to speak to what you said too, we think of the kids may have parents who are sitting at home watching this. I'm so happy for them that their kids may not be struggling with any of this. And those kids are sitting in classes with kids who are. And so you think about the kids who are, are sitting there and want to learn and then they're watching their teacher having to manage someone who is having that trauma response. And how long, we go back to that slide of how many hours that takes of that teacher to manage that child. And that child needs that support in that moment. And that one teacher in that classroom has, may have 16 other students, 18, 24 other students that is waiting to learn. So all of our kids are being impacted by the emotional and mental health needs of even just those small percentages of kids.
Yeah, I think that's a, an excellent segue into what I wanted to say. Because I, I think everybody thanked the counselors and thanks for the information. I don't want to say thanks again or else your heads won't be able to fit out the door, but thanks again. We appreciate what you do. But I, it, it reminded me when I'm looking at this, I, when I first moved to town, I was on the budget committee for Kingston. And there was a, a more tenured resident that was on the committee with me and we were talking about the school and I didn't know that much about the school, you know, and and the comment was, well, you know, they don't need, as, you know, they don't need more teachers, they need to just tell the kids what to do, like when I was in school. And you know, you don't get into that conversation, right? So this, when you look at everything that the teachers are dealing with, I think I just want to say thanks to the teachers because you hit on it, like how do you begin to educate? I, like I have some kids from Cub Scouts that I get their attention for seven minutes. And if, and if, if I have one that's disruptive, forget it, I'm not getting anything done. So again, thanks to the teachers, I think anytime a parent in this community wants to post a negative comment, they should probably look at this presentation first.
Thank you. And I think that as we all become ambassadors for the mental health needs of our kids, those of us, of us who are sitting here, those of us who are watching this really need to shout this from the rooftops because not everybody is going to take the time and I think those of us who are here need to make it a priority, let everybody know.
I did have, I did have two other things. I saw, and one, one thing that was a little scary was the comment I saw, the teachers don't feel they have the tools in their toolbox to deal with it, right? That's, we don't, it's just concerning. But the comment, one of the, one of the bullet points is partnering more with families to celebrate successes. I'd be interested in hearing what, a little bit more about that, you may not have the answer tonight, but I think that's important. And then the, the professional development day, I'm just curious, do, do you collaborate with other counselors outside of our district on those days and share any ideas that may, okay?
So I can speak to the celebrating our success, I think that we, we do have to, I think for some folks, they only hear or read what's on social media and that can sometimes have a negative slant to it. And we are doing some amazing things with our kids here and we need to get better at letting folks know the amazing things that are happening and to letting people know the amazing things that they can then be part of. So what does it mean to come to a school? You don't have to have a student who's playing the tuba to come to a school concert, but how cool would it be to go and watch your neighbor's kid play? So being able to more celebrate those successes and extend that invitation to everyone. And how can we do that so that more people feel like the schools are a place where they're welcomed also? Because they may be dealing with their own history around what did school mean for them and how welcome did they feel at school? And so we need to kind of change that narrative for them, so that's what I'm hoping that we can do with that. And as far as the professional development day, we've done a number of things, we have trained many of our staff to be trainers so that we don't have to bring in those folks for our, to do our ongoing trainings for our staff. So we have staff on hand who are trained in crisis prevention. We have staff who are trained in youth mental health first aid and they're able to provide the trainings for our teachers and for our counselors. And then for other topics, we do bring in experts for, send our staff to those trainings and then they come back and report out. I think that's an ask we always have when we send our staff to workshops and professional development is what can you bring back to the staff meetings to share with your colleagues? So we do a combination of a little bit of everything.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a five-minute break to, I, I just wanted to let the guidance counselor folks know, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting or the strategic plan part, but if you want to, you're certainly welcome. And thanks again for being here this evening.
Does anybody have any other questions for me or for any of the other counselors?
No, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. Five-minute break.
Five-minute break, okay.
Nope, they had to go and get me a special adapter.
Oh.
Okay, um, do we want to, um, we want to let, do we want to let JJ give his report?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, whatever you want to do.
All right, we're going to come back to order. All right.
Sergeant Woods.
Okay, so we will move to, we're gonna move to 9.1 in a minute as soon as the adapter gets here. In the meantime, we're going to have JJ do his student representative report.
The whiteout game for the girls is tonight at, it started at 6:30 in the gym, it's going on right now, I believe we are, as of the.
We're back in session.
We're back in session.
All right, JJ.
All right, JJ.
Uh, the girls whiteout game for basketballs uh, started tonight at six thirty and as of a couple of minutes ago during our break, we were up thirty-one, twenty. Um. The boys are playing on Friday, assuming that they aren't snowed out and they are playing at seven PM. Uh, the life of a student uh, club is doing a fifty-five inch uh, TV raffle. Where if you wear white to the game or either of the games, you get one entry for each of the games you go to while you're wearing white. And if you buy one of these special limited time, uh, let's go Sanborn shirts from the school store, you get five additional entries. Um, from Ms. Billado, Ms. Swist and Ms. Driscoll. Uh, massive congratulations to the twenty twenty-three recipients for the NH Scholastic Arts Awards Program from Sanborn. Those are Sydney DeLapp, honorable mention for painting, Jenna Zalik, honorable mention for ceramics. Jason Briggs, Silver Key Award for Photography and Felix uh, Mailhot for uh, Silver Key in Ceramics. Um, this is a statewide competition and less than half of all submission, submissions receive any sort of recognition. So a huge congratulation to the large number of recognized Sanborn students who have done amazing work and big shout out to everyone that's participated. Um, the art show for all the winners will be at Stockbridge Theater at Pinkerton Academy in Derry, New Hampshire. Or at Art Awards, New Hampshire, or sorry, artawardsnh.com. And the senior I applied, uh, senior acceptance wall is going up. You probably saw that on the way in. It's right across from the bathrooms and it lists everywhere that. Uh, Sanborn students have been accepted to. And where they, once they commit to going to a college, it highlights, or it's uh, they put them up in a special color in yellow. And uh, it showcases all the great work and all the, and the culmination of all the Sanborn. Uh, kids' achievements and it's really great seeing them go up. I'm helping put them up, or I'm helping. Uh, put some of them up and it's really great seeing dozens upon dozens every week go up. It's really neat.
Awesome. Thank you, JJ.
Ball yet, JJ?
I am one.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll have to go.
Did JJ?
No.
No, okay, yeah. Still got more to come in.
Yeah, good. That's the hope.
You've got more to come in. I have confidence in.
Thank you.
All right. So keep going, okay? Um, do we have any? Subcommittee reports? Tonight, I don't.
I don't.
Anybody have anything?
I can make one up and talk.
No. Jim, do you have anything for a subcommittee report?
Uh, just that the next facilities meeting is the twenty-seventh thirty PM.
Twenty-seventh at two thirty. Thank you.
Do you have Jimmy share where he is? I.
I did it first thing.
Oh, good. Thank you very much. Great job.
Got that one right away this time.
What about the male assistance program? Would that take long?
Um, we can, we can just do the signing of the default budget in the present.
No, I don't think that takes time at all.
Um, should I give option for first public comment quick? All right, anybody that would like to come up, take our first public comment? All right, state your uh. First and last name, the town you're from, uh, and we have three minutes.
Uh, Ian McGregor, uh, from Newton. Um, I have a uh, third grader, a fifth grader and an eighth grader. Um, she's cheering tonight, so I just happened to drop in. Um, so I felt actually compelled after the school counselors. Uh, my professional life as a firefighter paramedic for over twenty years, my wife's professional life as an ER nurse over twenty years. Um, it's only anecdotal, but I'll back up everything she said. Cause we see it in our professional life. And we see it from the youth to the adults, the good and the bad. Um, and this is where it gets resolved first, because I'll tell you, it's overwhelmed the healthcare, mental health. So fixing it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, there's no one else rushing up, so we can. Move on. All right, uh, signing of the twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four default budget.
Okay, so um, there's, there's uh, two documents that um, I need to, well, first I'm, I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna share them with you, but then I'll. Have you sign one of them.
Yep.
Okay, the first one's going to be the default budget. This is basically putting the default um, budget information that we presented previously onto a state form. And it just shows what those numbers are um, by function code. Um, now the default budget for those people that don't know, it's last year's default budget plus and minus other um, certain contractual obligations. Or, or mandates by law, and this is specified by um, uh, state statute, okay? Um, so all I need you to do is. Sign here on the front. And this is the same number that's been in our presentations. So if you have any questions, please ask. When you pass that one around.
All right.
Okay, the second one right here, this is called the MS twenty-seven. What this is, is called the proposed budget. This is a state required form. What it does is it shows um. The first column is. Um. Well, first, which article you'll find the number or it references on the actual warrant, which we're going to discuss later tonight. Okay, the next column is going to be expenditures for last fiscal year. The next column is the current year's budget. And then the next four columns are what the school board um, recommended, what they didn't recommend. And then what the budget committee recommended and what they didn't recommend. Now, the first part of this just shows the actual appropriations um, that represent um. What is, let's see, it's going to be the uh, operating budget and then, then there's another section down below that shows. Um, what's going to be in for special warrant articles, which are going to be the cap reserve fund additions and um, expendable trust funds. Okay, um, the next page shows um, what our estimated revenues are going to be. And what um, what is going to end up being raised through taxation. Now, the most important page on this in my career is the last page. What this is, is how much the, the budget can be adjusted at the deliberative session. It calculates what that amount is. Okay, so um. Do I have any questions on this? And it gets signed by the budget committee.
Just a question, you said it calculates, how could you just explain to people watching what that limit is?
So um, it's called the ten percent limit and it adds. It allows an additional three million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars to be um, included in the operating budget. It would push the maximum allowable appropriations up to forty-two million, five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. So someone at the floor can go up to that amount.
Or down by ten percent.
Yeah.
Right, works either way.
I always thought it would go the other way, but I can't find anything that would um.
Caps it.
Yeah. Down.
Well, yeah, didn't they just have that thing up that? I forget the town where they took half of it out or something.
Yeah, the name.
Maybe there's no cap.
Yeah, I, I was.
Go ahead.
And that's, no, I was thinking the same thing Jamie was thinking.
Yeah, okay, I just.
Yeah.
Explain the calculation. Can I sign the budget while I'm here?
Budget one is, uh, the budget committee. Oh, the budget committee. Oh, yes, absolutely.
There you go.
That way I get that.
If you want, I can jump onto another item and speak about the warrant. And then also get the signatures on this.
Yeah, let's just do it and get it done.
Okay, so um, when I read the warrant last time, there's been an update to the first article. And basically we had a, a budget committee member resign and we put their position on the um. On warrant article. So let me just really quickly read that whole, that article. Okay, so it's article one to elect the following school district officers. Uh, school board member, one member from Kingston for three years, one member for Newton for three years. One member at large for Kingston, Newton for three years, and then for moderator, one elected for one year. Budget committee, one member from Newton for one year, one member from Newton for three years, and one member from Kingston for three years. All right. So.
Do we have to make a motion to amend?
Hmm, I think they should.
I was gonna say, I think we need to accept the change.
Yes.
As read.
Let's just do that.
I make a motion to um, change our uh, warrant article number one to include uh, budget committee, one member from Newton for one year.
Second, great. Any discussion? All right. Uh, roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Jamie?
Hi.
And myself, yes. Great.
Can I have a signature for this as well?
Absolutely.
Then. I'm charging for signature.
I know, right?
My signature is gonna look different on every.
Well, Jamie took up half of mine.
We sign up here and down here. Matt?
Sorry.
You sign up here and down here? Cause it has both. Yes, we signed twice.
Yes.
All right, two signatures. All right, we'll be good to. Move on. Checking off all the stuff we're getting accomplished here. All right, Christine, are you good? All right, I'm moving out of your way.
Yeah, I do take off a lot of that.
Also is bad on this one this one space.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Christine Roach. And this evening I'm going to report on our update on the Sanborn Medical District Strategic Plan. What are action steps that have been completed as of January of twenty twenty-three? And I'd like to first thank school board, the district administration, the building administration and all the staff for all their hard work. In getting these milestones completed thus far. So what we have here in each of the slides. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Move the microphone now.
I'm not loud enough?
No, it's, it won't pick up for the web.
No problem.
You hear that?
Okay, not a problem. Can they hear me now? Should I ask that?
Yeah, that's better, much better. All right, thanks. Let us know.
Hey, excellent.
So I separated this out by each target area. And then the bullets are the actual milestones. That um, directly correlate to these tasks within each of these target areas. So looking at target one, target one talks about refining and clarifying the district's grading practices. So we're looking at the zero to a hundred, A through F. So grading surveys completed in the spring of twenty twenty-two, surveying staff, students and parents and the community. This information was previously shared last spring um, by Dr. Haynes. ISA met to discuss next steps. The school board adopted and moved to a hundred point scale in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, for the implementation of September of twenty twenty-two. Teachers and administrators met to develop the grading and reporting manuals. And plan for a sixth through twelfth grade implementation of the zero to a hundred point scale, also the A through F. These manuals can be found on the middle school and high school websites. The zero to a hundred point scale was implemented in grade six, twelve for the twenty-two, twenty-three school term. This will be done for grades three, five uh, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school term. And we've provided PD to all teachers in grade six through twelve on the Alma grading system interface as the grading system interface. For the traditional model is different than what they were used to. Also from strategic target one, adopt and implement a rigorous curriculum K-12 with clearly defined expectations of what students will know. And be able to do for each grade level and or course. K-12 competencies and performance indicators were updated and posted on the district website in July of twenty twenty-one. And that included something that the competencies and then we fine tuned. All of those performance indicators off of state and national standards. Here at a glance, core syllabus documents based on the graduation competencies. And performance indicators for all content areas K-12 were completed by June of twenty-two. The documents, these documents have been linked to the teacher's Google classrooms or seesaw at the bakey level. Understanding by design units are in draft forms for all subject areas in grades six, twelve, which is stage one and stage two. Elementary K-five have the understanding by design units drafts written stage one and two for math. And all unified arts classes, so they're specials, art, physical education, things like that. Science, social studies and English language arts needs to be completed in grades K-five. Once school board approved programs are chosen for these areas. Summer summits um, conducted for drafting of the units. This was done in uh, July and August and, and teachers volunteered. In either pairs, individuals, depending on their content area and or subject taught. And they wrote the units and this will continue this summer of twenty twenty-three if the funds are available. This strategic target also talks about our NEASK accreditation. So so far for NEASK accreditation, we've gone through our accreditation seminar with all the staff. We've done our self reflection report and submitted that. We've held our collaborative conference visit with visiting teams and that was held at the end of November. We are currently waiting on those results. Moving on to strategic target two. Build a dedicated workforce by recruiting, developing and retaining effective professionals. Exit interviews offered to all staff leaving the district. The synopsis of results reported to the personnel committee in September per the strategic plan. Advertising accounts for non-teaching work, staff including jo, uh, ed jobs. School spring and indeed. Along with the superintendent, uh, attended PLC meetings and talked with all staff members regarding leadership. Communication, culture, professional growth and vision and values. They also looked at an employee engagement plan. Reported to personnel committee the number of staff who left the district and the results of those exit interviews. Contacted local colleges and universities to not only recruit permanent teaching staff, but also to recruit substitute staff. Continually updated open positions through recruitment sites. Utilize building principles to post to social media open positions that are difficult to find applicants. Also from strategic target two, which is objective C, continue to foster the collaborative culture focused on professional learning and teacher leadership. Submit a copy of the professional development plan to the New Hampshire Department of Education for approval. Professional development training and calibration for all administrators. Professional development for team leaders at each building took place in August. They're called the team summits. Building level team leader meetings weekly and bi-weekly with principals and or the math and literacy coordinators for K-five. Strategic target three. Provide and maintain the appropriate infrastructure for current and future district needs. Perform audit of existing lighting at all school buildings. Capital improvement plan recommended by the facility subcommittee and approved by the school board. Awarded the safety grant which included window film and security barriers to protect the buildings from unwanted intruders. Reviewed and recreated the process and how software is tracked and approved. During this process, software was analyzed redundancies and alignment to the curriculum, business and IT needs. Some software was removed from district usage. And then front access steps and batch key entries added to the memorial mo, uh, the memorial mobile, which is their shed. Is that correct?
It's a cottage, yes.
Cottage.
Cottage. Thank you.
Right.
Strategic target four. Foster positive relationships with community partnerships and collaboration among all stakeholders. So this is to improve internal communication and public relations with the community. Selected and implemented a software that can send phone calls, texts and emails to all stakeholders. That may come in handy later this week or maybe next week, because we're supposed to get quite a bit of snow.
Mm-hmm.
Regularly update current information on the district webpages. Facebook posts by all buildings, newsletters from all schools, weekly staff memos. Hosted business events, i.e. luncheons, breakfast, et cetera, for community partnerships. Strategic target five. Provide a safe and structured learning and work environment. Emergency operation plans completed and filed with the state, including the plan for the Department of Homeland Security. For the Seabrook Station Radiology Emergency Plan. Annual for trainings for staff assigned, and this is effective one, twenty twenty-three. Work with the vector solutions to provide comprehensive wire trainings in one platform. Established a current joint loss management committee. Conducted safety inspections in the spring of twenty twenty-two, creating a job loss management.
A joint loss.
Thank you. Committee, thank you, Manuel, and it can, I'm sorry, it's, I'm tired. And continuing the review, safety concerns with the district. And continuing the review safety concerns with the district. District-wide superintendent safety task force meets and discusses district-wide safety with first responders from the local county and state level. Target five again, objective C, improve and streamline transportation. Organize a recurring meeting with the salt or transportation. The purpose of the meeting is to communicate and find solutions to difficulties both parties are having. Organize a recurring meeting with the Durham service transportation. The purpose of this meeting is to communicate and find solutions to difficulties both parties are having. Approved rental vans where leasing and purchasing of vans at this time is not an option as the vehicles are not available. So policy AJ was updated to allow staff to transport students with district district provided vehicles. And due to bus driver shortages, the bus company created route plans that are communicated to building principals daily. So this concludes what we've worked on thus far since September within the strategic plan and the five targeted areas. And as Tom and Heather mentioned earlier, we do have some suggestions on how to update parts of the strategic plan moving forward. And I'll take questions if anyone has any.
I'll see one quick here first before Jamie goes.
Yes, for Jamie, yes.
You can go back to your normal seats if you want to. Um, uh, yeah, classroom management, right? No, I just wanted to mention that that there are, um. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Christine for all of her hard work this year. The NEASK process has been exhausting. And there are some administrators that have been involved, particularly Mr. Dawson and Ms. Mitchinson. And the administrators have been working hard to to keep an eye on these things. We spent four hours about two weeks ago combing through every single point in the strategic plan. Unfortunately for the administrators, that yielded a to-do list. But it was good and they they I was very happy to see how many things we've done. It was really fun to go through and like put it well, okay. For me, it was fun because I'm kind of a nerd, but I went through and we put everything in the tasks and dated things and thought about it and it really felt like it's working. So that that was the first thing. The second thing is some stuff came up that we wanted to talk about and so we will. Christine and I will be in touch through ISA or other committees to to do a couple of subtle updates. One of the things that we want to talk about is Alma. Is Alma really meeting our needs with the new grading system? The other thing that we need to talk to you about is the behavior component and social or emotional or mental health goal, whatever we want to call it as a community. The other thing that we had been kind of thinking about was, uh, the the unfinished business with the grading practices of having a conversation about the work-study practices and how to pull them out or how to do and part of that is a piece of the Power School Alma conversation. We're finding that Alma doesn't work so great for doing traditional grading with some of the other things that we want to do. So we do need to have a conversation slightly expedited about what we want to do. I think we're probably going to stay where we are for next year, but we're struggling. We have we have some things that we wonder about. So we, I just want to give you a heads up. We're thinking a lot. We're doing a lot of work. But you don't see it because we're doing it hard and behind the scenes right now, only because we're formulating some ideas to help us move forward. And as soon as we're ready to present more, we will definitely be doing that. Is that, did I cover it, Christine?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Well, it'd be just because especially for the work-study practice, that's now encumbered in part of the grading and what we're using. So it needs to either be tweaked or really needs to focus more on the mental health component for that versus like the work-study practices where students are cooperating, et cetera.
Yeah, and and I think the question for us is we want to talk to you about is the we need to decide as a team, is it more important to stay with the same software because transitioning software is such a massive undertaking? I don't want software making decisions for us. I want us to tell the software what to do and have it work for us. And so we're we're still kind of working with Alma to see what we can and can't do. I'll be blunt, we're not loving it. Parents aren't loving it and teachers definitely don't love it. So we are just dipping our toes in the water to figure out the next steps with that whole process. What I said is I just want to keep things calm and moving forward right now because we have so much positive momentum. I would rather us take our time and really examine is the problem with Alma Alma or is it us using Alma? And then once we have that decision, bring forward a recommendation. I just want you to know we're examining it. There's nothing to do with this at this time. Okay. Okay, Jamie, I'm done.
So just it's communication items, really. So you mentioned that you've updated the task and everything. Has a revised plan been put on the website so people can pull that and and see that?
We didn't change the plan. The tasks are updated live on the website.
Okay.
So when you click on the task, you see what we actually put in there. And if we change it in a week, it'll change automatically. It's organic, it just lives. Yeah, it's real-time updates.
So can we have this posted? What you just presented as an update?
Yep.
And and then finally, um, the year at a glance. Can we have that readily available so that parents can see that? Cause that's in English language. What are we doing at a grade level basis?
So all parents have access to that through Google Classroom? Or kids or there's CSOFT there at the primary level?
Can we get it on the website so even on?
How do we parents access through Google Classroom? Cause we don't have access to Google Classroom. We have access to Alma. We only have access through Alma. We don't have access to Google Classroom.
Which is a frustration because Alma doesn't, if there's something, if the teacher doesn't update Alma, they'll like go check the Google Classroom. I'm like, I get your, like, I get alerts that there's things missing from Google Classroom, but like when he was in, my son was in the school, I was linked to his entire Google Classroom.
Interesting.
And I could see like, if he, I could see.
Correct, because that's what I, yes, yes.
But no, at least for the high school, I don't have access and I don't even.
Or the middle school.
For my baking student.
Okay.
Yeah, bottom line, parents aren't getting.
Parents don't.
There.
It'd be good to have that on the web.
Those of putting this information out is the better.
Yeah, and can we run a test on the text?
Oh, I have been, that's a separate.
Cause I have signed up twice and I have yet to get a text.
Thank you. Um, I did just post last week.
No, through the system.
Okay.
You're gonna test her?
Yeah, no, oh, I get plenty of texts, don't worry. But through the system.
Do me, just so I don't forget, send shoot me an email. I'm working with Gordon personally.
Okay.
To, so I don't know if y'all saw or not, but I posted on Facebook the other day. If you want the text messages, sign up here. If you didn't get them, um, if you're not getting them, email Dan or Gordon directly. And I'll put a notice out there about that too, that if you signed up and you're not getting them, we need to let it.
But is this new? Cause like I got the text last.
Thanks, Rick.
I don't know. I'm not the text messaging. Is it a new issue this year, Christine? Yeah, because it seemed to be working fine last year.
I had to just redo mine.
I signed up again this year and I haven't gotten anything.
I didn't get a call from myself.
Well, there you go.
So normally when I, so the other day I did a test run for the staff. They got all excited because they thought I was calling a snow day and then I didn't. So, yeah, I know, I know, right?
Council meetings and we were in our class council meetings and so.
I did it after school though.
Yeah, it was.
Oh, so you were at, oh, you're, okay, after school, all right.
Mr. Kelly's like, oh, here's a call from the superintendent.
So, so I, yeah, I did not get the call myself and I didn't get the test text message either.
Yeah.
So I am working on that.
Okay.
But the answer is email Gordon and Dan McClellan.
Okay.
Because they need to know if you're not getting the text.
Right. Okay. I think what we should do is I think we should maybe send out an email saying on this date at this time, we are going to run a test text message. If you do not receive it and you have signed up for it, please let us know.
Great, I'd be happy to do.
Cause otherwise we don't know if we're supposed to be getting something or not.
Yep.
So I think that's the best way to test.
We can do it tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we'll run it tomorrow.
Yeah.
I thought Rick would laugh a little at that, but.
The newsletters that come out weekly from our two obvious principals out here.
Well, okay, there's a third one.
We've got all of them out here.
If I actually read them. And I do scroll down and I wonder if some of this information, if we can't, maybe it's not this or maybe it's a suicide thing. I think that's just, I shouldn't suicide, whatever behavioral, the behavioral.
The risk.
If that was in there too, that just might be another.
So one, one thing I talked to Gordon, yeah, I, one thing I've been talking to the principals about is less is more.
Yes.
And and our news, I get newsletters from the school that my children attend and I just say to my wife, did you get that?
No, but I mean.
They're huge, like a tome.
But each week one is sent out.
Right.
So I'm not saying send me another email. I'm just saying allow me to scroll down.
Okay.
Not everyone's gonna do that. And oftentimes they are like the same thing over and over again, which is fine, but I just think it's one more way in for people to see like, to see things if it was at the bottom of that, it's somewhere in those newsletters. Don't send me another email, agree.
Yep.
But.
Well, I think, I think for the texting, what we've realized is that particularly the generation of parents that are pre-K to third grade or second grade are way more text savvy than email.
Yeah.
They don't read emails as much as they do texts.
But but are they getting that?
That's what we're trying to figure out. That's what we're trying to figure out.
Like if it's the same, whether you give it to me in a text and I have a link, it's the same.
Right.
Thing like I read it and okay, what's new? What do I need to update myself on? Whether you gave it to me text and I click on the link or whatever, but.
Well, what we're trying to do is to figure out what Dawn was going for, which is who's actually getting the texts and is it working? And for that, we might send out some individual emails that just have that in it. Because we can't seem to connect with parents that they're, but then I hear from you that you've signed up twice and you're not getting it and that makes me even more.
I was with Matt Malila sitting waiting for a meeting when I re-signed up for it. So he can witness that I signed up.
All right, we'll get back to you. Thank, we're gonna use you as a guinea pig now.
Perfect.
I can go in and just text you.
That's fine.
So I'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. So we'll, we'll do some practice tomorrow.
They can go visit Matt Mello.
Yeah.
Yeah, call Matt Malilla. Just kidding. That's like, all right, we'll do some work on it tomorrow. Thank you very much for that feedback. All right, any other questions for Christine and the administrators that are present?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, uh, thank you for putting that together and thank you for the the teacher, staff and administration on working so hard on these goals and objectives.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You asked for quarterly updates and quarterly doesn't really work for schools because we don't have summer stuff like you do. Right? So what Jamie and I talked about is in the future, let's set dates. You'll get an update on this date, this date and this date three times a year. So we're kind of behind on our goal of being quarterly, but we're trying to give you updates so that we meet the the intent of the goal. Yeah, trimester updates.
There we go.
Yep. All right, um, principals and folks, that generally means you can all leave except for Troy because he's hanging around.
Unless you wanna hang.
Yeah, I mean, you can hang around if you want to. I, yeah. When I do that at a team meeting, they're like, go now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so where are we at?
Are we cooking now?
Seven point two. Wait one second.
Yeah, let me send a text to Dawson.
Yeah, Mr. Dawson wants.
Is he done at the game?
He's down at the game. He's gonna come down. Yep.
If he can't come right this second, we can push it.
Few minutes and do the meal assistance.
Yeah. We have two. No, we, well, two technically, because that's what it was. I didn't have detail.
So let's do the meal assistance thing first.
Yeah, the meal assistance.
Yeah, okay.
I could just do a second public comment. All right, we'll call for a second public comment. We're a little bit out of order, but that's okay. So if anyone has anything they would like to come to the podium and speak about? I know, right?
Ian McGregor, Newton.
Perfect.
Um, actually, uh, you mentioned the newsletter, which got me thinking, um, because I read all, you know, because I have a kid in each of the schools, so. They're different formats.
Yes.
So each one of the newsletters comes, one of them comes in an email as a PDF, click gives you PDF. One of them comes in an email with a click this bar and it takes you to a Google Doc. And then another one comes as, hey, click here on this tiny little word and it brings you a Google Doc. So maybe we should look at standardizing them and that might help to make it all, hey, a standard email from each of the schools because it's the same district with the same kind of look, you know, like, you know.
Where to go for what?
Yeah, just a thought process and maybe you don't need to have all of the information that you've been talking about posting because everything tonight was great. But maybe just a link in that newsletter if you're gonna post it on the website or somewhere else. Cause then it makes, keeps those newsletters simple. Well, that is, hey, this was great information. Click the link.
Not all Google Docs can be opened on.
Yeah, because that's what I found too, Evan.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good point.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Back next time.
I'm gonna go tell my daughter is watching her cheer at the best.
Great job.
Was watching them cheer too. All right. Mr. Dawson, you are up. You are.
Dr. Dawson.
That's right.
Dawson.
Sorry, sorry, Bob. How's that? Is that better, Bob? That way I don't mess it up.
People in the gym and we're winning. Yeah, they're having a good old time. We got DJ Cliff West spinning the heads at the basketball game tonight, which is an adventure if you know Cliff. He's our bus driver and resident DJ.
Oh, yes.
On the bus.
Yes. He came to the field hockey senior game and. Yeah, 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 yeah.
He's an adventure. You guys need that when you take a break during the meeting, you could pump some tunes in, fire up the crowd, the crowd, get them going.
Bring with a deliberative?
All right, well, they're gonna be done in about a minute. Now they gotta clean up that mess down in the gym, so. Matt Moore has more of the information than I do on what we're hoping to do, which is to get a a van and a, I guess we'll call it a lease.
Well, we have two different options, okay? The first option is we can buy it outright or we can lease it. Right now, the rate for leasing van is gonna be, I think it's 6.4%. Okay, the problem that I foresee out of this whole thing is, is well, there's two problems. The first one is we can't find a brand new van. Okay, all the vans are being purchased by one particular company and they're buying up all that's being made for GM, Ford and Dodge. Okay, and it's gonna be like this for another year. So our options really are looking at used vans. Okay, our problem with used vans is they come and go very quickly. And so for us to get three quotes, we can't get three quotes for that used van. Okay, we can probably come up with three different vans to present to the school board to choose, but the problem is is they go so quickly. So what I'm asking or proposing is, is that the school board waive the policy, the purchasing policy, which is policy DJE and and appoint a school board member that would oversee the process for that we can confer with while we're doing it. I just want to make sure that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. And we're trying to purchase something relatively soon using what's what inventory is out there.
Can I translate first? Just for one second. What Matt's saying is Bob found a van that he really wants to buy and he's asking you to help him out to do it so that we can get it because it's gonna save over 20 grand in bus fees if we buy the van.
Yeah, but that's the end.
Sorry, I'm just trying to put it into layman's terms.
That van's gone.
That van's gone. Oh, that van's gone.
May not be.
It may not be.
May have nice enough to.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, so I'm hoping to email it first thing in the morning and grab it. I believe it has, it's a 2019 with like 20,000 miles on it. It's got a screen, it's got a backup camera, it's got bucket seats, which is nice because the kids and it's all seat belts and everything. And we obviously would get it inspected and so forth. I would be using it if I may for golf, cross-country bowling. All the teams that are basically 12 or 11 student athletes and under. Uh, right now, my average bus cost is running around $600 a trip. Uh, last year at this time, it was about $450 a trip. Um, if I can basically spend a hundred dollars on average, which might be some I'll need to get a driver for if a coach isn't comfortable driving. Most of the coaches are like, I'll just drive. Cause it's easier for them. They can get out of there whenever they need to. Tennis, golf, bowling, all those small teams that we have cross-country, we're gonna probably be sending eight kids out to a track meet in Jaffrey. Uh, at the beginning of the track season, I can throw them in the van instead of spending $750 on a bus, it'll cost us 60 bucks and 60 bucks in gas. So I did a quick run of what I thought over the course of the year. It completely conveniently, it kind of cracked me up when I ended up with, ended up exactly $20,000 that I saved. It happened to be 40 trips at about $500 a trip that we would save. Um, and that would just be in the first year. It's also something where we leased or rented a van in the fall. Um, we spent a lot of money to get a van in the fall, but it saved my bacon because I didn't have to use any coach buses. And I basically figured out it broke even in the fall and we paid a lot of money for that particular van.
Did you say it saved your bacon?
Yes.
Okay, I was just making sure because I thought it was pretty funny.
Old expression.
Yes.
So I can live with that. And it was also used during the day quite a bit by special education. Um, and, uh, it was also used during the day quite a bit by special education to do some of their quick little field trips. They run to Hannahford and have some of the life skills students go shopping. Um, they can go to the, uh, All American Living for a trip like that. The student council used it at one time to shuttle kids back and forth to Camp Lincoln. Those kind of trips kind of don't even count against that. Those are hard to get buses for. And if you spend three hundred and fifty dollars on a bus to go to Hannahford. And instead like you could throw the kids in the van to go six miles down the road, that's a pretty good deal for us. So I'm obviously think this would be a great thing to do. Um, it's very common now amongst high schools in the state, uh, to have these, we were branded up. Um, and obviously the middle school would use it on occasion and they would have it for some of their smaller athletic stuff as well, so pretty pleased.
Is it a two thousand nineteen Ford Transit three fifty?
I believe it is, yes.
Well, the one that you gave me is two thousand twenty.
Is it a twenty? Okay.
Yeah, and when you click on the link, it's not available.
I think he pulled it down to save it for us.
Oh, really? Okay.
That's what he told me.
And it's a Ford Transit three fifty X L T twelve passenger. How many miles? It, it, the listing, I have to remember cuz I didn't print it out, was sixteen thousand miles. There's a nineteen with forty nine thousand miles for forty three thousand. Yeah.
I'm just gonna throw it out there. The prices are going to readjust in March, April timeframe.
They, they already are readjusted.
Yeah, but March, April is when they really.
Yeah, they're already coming down.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, I don't know.
Make them available though.
Yeah, that's the problem.
No, I know. Yeah.
And, and just.
Overpay now and it comes down and. It's irrelevant if it comes out in March or April, we can't buy it cuz it's not available. But we're gonna save the money, say we could get it in a year. Sounds like we're gonna save money now.
I have a couple of trips in the next three weeks that I would use it for. You know, we're sending the charity to a competition.
Transparent that the prices. So if in a couple of months, somebody says, well, but you could have bought it now for this much money. We're aware of that, so.
And, and that we have the, the comment that yes, but let's say it's ten thousand less. We, we saved eight thousand on coach buses by buying it now.
Mm hmm.
I, I don't know what the, I'm, I'm making, you know, you'd have to do an actual analysis.
Just to be, you know, to lay it on the, we're about halfway through the winter season. Um, I would need it, I would use it for this particular season for a couple of bowling trips, like we're sending our bowling team. Um, what time you getting up on Saturday morning?
I will be leaving the school. We will, the bus will be pulling away at six thirty AM.
Right, to go to Keene. I haven't gotten a, a bid on that bus, but they're three hours on site, hour and a half back and forth. That'll be about an eight hundred dollar bus. If I had a van for this Saturday, I could send the van out there with. You know, a teacher driving it that we would pay, let's say, it would probably cost about two hundred dollars. So that's the kind of instant savings we can go faster, we can get rolling with this.
So. I look at a couple of websites cuz I have a friend that, you know, that work, lives in New Hampshire that we get a lot of trucks from, for our company. So I just did a similar search, right? So you look at. Surrounding fifty mile area, twenty twenty four transit passenger three fifty, sixty eight thousand miles, forty one thousand. Twenty twenty four transit passenger three fifty, fifty five thousand miles, forty seven thousand dollars. I'm, I'm, you know, rounding up. Uh, twenty nineteen Ford Transit, fifty nine thousand miles, forty thousand nine hundred. Twenty nineteen Ford Transit three fifty, eighty thousand miles, thirty seven thousand. So I heard sixteen thousand miles, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was about fifty and a half and they have like, I believe it's seven hundred and fifty dollar disposition fee or whatever they call it.
Yeah, and I'm not entirely certain that it's still available. Cuz it, if you click on the link, it's gone.
But he said that he thinks he pulled it down.
Yeah, he thinks, yeah, I, I told him yesterday, we'd be discussing this tonight. And I might have the opportunity to go as early as tomorrow morning. If we pull back, we pull back, but.
There's a twenty twenty one with nineteen thousand miles for sixty thousand, six eighty nine. I, I, I think it's compared to what's around in the surrounding area for that model, it's, it's a fair, it's a fair price. And by the way, this is with Merchant Motors. I, I just brought up Merchant. I didn't see that year.
Jim?
I'm just wondering, uh, Bob, you said I had, you had a bowling trip?
Yep.
Twelve passenger, does that mean twelve plus the driver or eleven plus the driver?
Eleven plus the driver.
And is that big enough? Or are you gonna need to have another vehicle too?
It would be, in this particular case, the bowling team is right around twelve, but I happen to have a mom who goes to everything. Uh, who I know would help me out in that particular case and take two of our student athletes who happen to live in her house. Yeah, some adaptation. Now, the kids might not love that, um, but they're, and with that particular trip, I think last week we had eleven that went. Um, and so our coach could have made that drive. She works at Camp Lincoln and does this with her, you know, Camp Lincoln stuff all the time, so it's not something.
And how does that fit in on a regular basis for some of these other events? Is it? Is it enough for the whole team or are you still gonna need another vehicle?
It, so for something like the baseball team, um, which is, let's say seventeen athletes, two or three coaches, it's not gonna work. Um, if you're sending out the soccer team, it's not gonna work for that. If I had an instance where I was sending out my girls' basketball team to a scrimmage, let's say at Timber Lane, or they were gonna go to Pelham. And it was gonna be the coach and only a couple of kids that were going, or in this, that case, I have a dad who coaches, he could take a couple of kids. That's where I'm hoping we can, um, make some of the, some additional savings on top of that, um, depending on the size of the team.
So how does that, how does that affect the forty trips at five hundred dollars a trip savings?
Those would be on top, so I anticipate that the forty trips I'm talking about would be entirely. Uh, we'd be able to use the van entirely for those particular trips.
And not have to have additional transportation that we're paying a lot more for.
Correct, so it's, it's a, it would be a, so if I have nine cheerleaders going to a, a football game, they don't really fit on the football bus. Um, they go to, let's say, West High School in Manchester and they're on the ground for about four and a half hours. They can also immediately get out of that game. And instead of running a seven hundred dollar bus to that game, I'm paying up, you know, I'm paying basically gas. Um, then of course you have the cost of the van factor as well, but I'm just talking the savings versus what I'm outlaying and what I pull back in.
And then last, last question is, is, is this covered by some blanket district insurance? Or is there additional insurance on this?
Hey, look, it's Matt. Um, it, it's covered by our blanket insurance.
Okay.
It wouldn't be any different than, than any other automotive. We would just have to add it and then, and the value of it wouldn't even. Um, be significant, uh, significant enough to even change the, uh, the amount of the, uh, that we owe to Primex.
So other than the capital cost and maintenance and gas, there really wouldn't be. Much in the way of additional costs?
That's correct. Yeah, repairs, maintenance and gas. And I did speak to Dan Doyle today and he reminded me that we would get gas at the government rate. We put government tags on it. And he was saying we could get the gas locally with a tax-free situation. We don't have tolls when we're in state in a government-tagged car, so. There's some little extra savings over what we did when we rented the van in the fall.
Yeah, it's had a question. I, I know there was a couple soccer games canceled and, um, I thought I recalled that if, um. If, uh, we had a, a few parents that were able to drive, we probably could have attended those games. Do I remember, am I misremembering here or what?
No, you're remembering correctly. So we had a couple of trips in the fall where we had driver situations come up late. Um, that situation seems to have, cross my finger, um, improved over this particular season. Um, where we don't have as many days where we have multiple buses going out before three forty five. So three forty five is a, is a thing because buses can come off the elementary run and then take a run with our kids to a game. Um, so like in a pinch, if I'm going, say, to Oyster River with basketball, we can leave here at three forty five. Get up to Oyster River, say at four thirty, even five o'clock and play a five thirty JV basketball game, play seven for varsity. I can do those kinds of juggling around. The ones that we had in the fall were just a situation where I couldn't get the bus and they canceled last minute. So I didn't have the opportunity to try to even replace them, uh, with something else.
I guess my question is, could we use this van if parents were, were willing to drive it?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
So I see a lot of parents attending the soccer games.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a team aspect of riding the bus to a game, so it's not perfect. You know, I wouldn't necessarily do it.
Ride the bus to a game or not play the game.
Yeah, no, no, definitely, definitely, or, um, you know, we're in Hampstead, let's say. Um, you know, for a fifteen minute ride and the bus just sits there for four hours and it costs you, let's say, three hundred and fifty bucks. I've got multiple parents that are gonna be attending that game, we know that. And they're very good about volunteering to go there.
Okay.
We're just careful not to arrange those rides. Parents will say, my kid's good, he's got a ride over the game and they take him over there, so they all pile in Heather's car and go to the baseball game, so. You know, and it works, um, for us, but I'd rather have them together, particularly on the way to the game. But there may be opportunities where we can, you know, shave some time off of that.
Okay.
As well.
I think Rick's point is that it would have averted losing a game if we had a van available and right on site.
Yep.
And then had a couple of parents willing to step up.
Yeah. Yeah, that particular game that he's talking about was right on when we were getting the van.
Remember that day.
And we didn't, it wasn't really not, actually we had the van. It was, it was a matter of how late we had to cancel. There was no time to really effectively make sure that all the kids were gonna get to the game the right way. You know, that they weren't just jumping in cars and we lost track of them, so.
I think what Rick's saying is that for the community to understand that there's a benefit of flexibility.
Yeah.
For the community to support the students if we purchase the van because we really can't. We had hoped that a lease would be reasonably priced and the lease is not reasonably priced according to Matt. I'm not in the weeds on this. So I, I think that the recommendation from Matt and, and, um, Bob, Dr. Dawson. They're recommending that we purchase the van because the savings will be so much over a two-year period. It's just worth it in light of not being able to lease. So we're looking for, um, a, 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 a motion to waive the policy and authorize them to move forward to purchase a van.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, further comment?
Yeah. So, uh, I got a couple of questions. You mentioned before that you've got the, um, that you rented the van. We don't own that van, right? You're just renting it to test out how we, having a van would work, is that correct?
Well, two things, that, um, so we had an idea of what we, you know, what flexibility we got from that. Um, and secondly, we would have been in big trouble if we didn't have it. Because of days where you have the golf team going out early, a middle school game and a high school game, and I need three early buses when there's really only one driver. So, okay, and so Salter was able to work with us. We were able to push some games later to make those trips work. Um, we had, you know, games where the kids are piling in the bus at three forty five to play a four fifteen game in Hampstead or Timber Lane or Epping. Um, and Raymond, things like that, so it's not great. So the van really helped us out in the fall.
Yeah.
So the way that we acquired the van was. Very expensive, way more than this would be for, I think, you know, it was like a thousand bucks a week. But it led us to what we need to do and it definitely broke even for us.
So from the, the different bits of information that I've heard. Um, is that the price of this van is quite good compared to a much higher mileage vans. Mr. Edelman was just, uh, rattling off for us, so it seems a good value there. Mr. Angel noted it's a six point four percent, uh, interest rate on a lease, so leasing is gonna cost us more money as a district than buying is. I'm hearing I got a two and a half year payback, fifty thousand dollars upfront versus twenty thousand dollars a year in savings. Uh, that being the case, I would expect they would be reducing the budget for the next two and a half years. Or going forward into perpetuity, as long as there's the van, by twenty thousand dollars in the transportation account, is that correct?
Well, you'd have to offset it. Um, so what you're saying is, if you took. Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're, sorry, Jamie, it took me a moment to wrap my brain around what you're saying. If we pay the full fifty thousand upfront now. That we would reduce the transportation budget by twenty thousand dollars.
Right, the savings that Mr. Dawson, Dr. Dawson, Dr. D.
Not a muppet, anyway.
The, the, the savings that, that Dr. Dawson had mentioned, we should be taking that back out of the budget because the reason we're buying it is to purchase those savings.
Theoretically, yes.
Mm hmm.
My theoretically is I'm just nervous about gas prices, but yes.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, so I'm, so I would, I would be in favor of it because that's. Uh, and to me, when we're doing an analysis as to whether it makes sense or not, we got a, a question on the table, a comparison of, of lease versus buy. A, a validation of the asset price, a, a payback that's reasonable. And an ability to say by having this, I get flexibility, I can benefit the kids. Uh, I can save twenty thousand dollars a year to pay for my purchase. It's the lifespan on a sixteen thousand mile car. That's two thousand nineteen, uh, vehicle is gonna be more than just the payback time, so I'm gonna get added benefits going forward. To me, this is a, this is a valid return on, on investment play to do something, um, that's more flexible. That provides greater ability to service the kids at a lower cost overall. But we should take that money out. We, we should. We should, we should do what we, we say we believe, and if we believe it's twenty thousand savings a year, then that should come out of the budgets.
Jim?
Yeah, um, Matt's, I, I'm in favor of this deal. But what Matt's asking for is a blanket waiver. To buy a van, any van with no conditions. So I'm not in favor of waiving it blanketly. I'm, the, the policy for getting three bids is what we're asked, being asked to waiver. I am in favor of wavering it for this deal. So what are we, what are we being asked to do, Matt?
Well, um, when I wrote my memo and I click on the link for that particular van, it's not available at Merchant. So if, if in this motion, if you wanna make it specific to this van at Merchant's, that's fine by me. Um, but if it's gone, then we're gonna be revisiting it. And so really, uh, what I was hoping was is to have a board member assigned to this. That would oversee the, the, the transaction. So if it's like a blanket waiver, it's just gonna be one board member. To work with the administration when buying the van to be transparent.
But I would suggest if we're gonna do that, that the Chair of Finance, if he's willing, would be the person that should, should oversee that.
And so I, I, I agree with Matt that we, we should have the waiver for purchasing a van. So he doesn't have to, if this is gone, come back and say, I gotta call around everybody else. Uh, it would all due respect, the person that seems to have the best knowledge and ability to get information as to the value of the vehicle is Mr. Edelman. I mean, he was just able to get online and, and validate numerous different data sets that made it very clear. The value of this asset that, that we're looking at. So I mean, if you wouldn't mind, I would defer.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind. I just think, uh, for transparency based upon what Jim brought up, I think, um, you, you know, you and I can connect quickly on a regular basis. I don't think we'll lose time for that, right? We're readily available, so I think, Matt, you bring in any information to me, I'll confer with you, Jamie. And then, um, you'll get a response.
Perfect. I just wanna know for the record that Jamie just gave away power to you.
Well, I sort of gave it back.
I know.
I think Morgan stuck.
I was just impressed. I'm, I'm like.
I, I'm just glad you didn't throw my name in the hat. No, I was willing to, I was actually willing to take on responsibility and say.
I'm down with that. No, I, I nominate her. Yeah, and if, Matt, if this.
I'm fine with the motion that's been made forward with Rick as the contact and he will confer. With Jamie, so I will amend my motion to that second. All right, any further, further discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Heather.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Maura.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
I'm a yes.
Dr. D, way to go.
Thank you.
This will.
Right now.
Yeah, I'm gonna email, actually Kevin from, don't forget Special Ed, by the way, um, cuz that's a big piece of it.
A ton, Kevin will be.
Kevin's gonna be thrilled to death cuz it's gonna, it, it's, gives him the chance to basically just jump and go in a lot of cases.
Yes, really, really. Uh, no, um.
Kevin Bowden. Yep, so. All right, I'm gonna walk slowly back to the gym and hope they cleaned it up already, which would be awesome cuz. Sure, we won.
We can keep talking about this.
No, I think, yeah, another forty-five minutes and you guys.
I don't have a cushion.
I can do that.
He's go, he's gonna get this van.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Bob. All right, uh, nine point two meal assistance program.
I feel like we're just been all over the place.
We have been all over.
Yeah, that's the last thing before non-public.
This is the last one.
Okay, so, um, back in June of two thousand and twenty. Now, oh, first, this came up because we've had some, uh, conversations from Mr. Edelman about, uh, the school food service program. Do you wanna jump in? Yeah, I'll jump in, yeah. So I specifically had questions for Tom and Matt. Based upon information that I read and heard about kids not being able to eat at school. Um, so that was concerning to me and I felt like I needed to be educated. So I'll, I'll give it back to you and you can, I'll jump in if. Oh, absolutely, jump in.
There you go.
Okay, so back, um, back in June of two thousand and twenty. Uh, Mr. Stack brought a meal assistant program to the school board to approve, which they did.
to the school board to approve, which they did. So basically, what the program does is it sets up some mechanism where people can contribute money to the school district to pay for um meals for kids who are not eligible to pay for that and also are not eligible for free and reduced lunch. Okay? What I've instructed my staff this week is to set it up in the accounting system. Um, so we can actually collect the information right now. Tomorrow, I'm going to see if I can get myself on this so I can have an automatic payroll deduction and just add it to that account and make it available. All right? So um, uh, basically, what the program does is it, it, it also provides a mechanism for us to go and evaluate when the kid can get it and make it easy.
So um, there was a couple of things. Um, uh, children are not turned away if they, like, every, every child gets a meal.
Okay, so outside of this program, even, even without this authorization, every kid gets a meal.
Okay.
Period.
Every child doesn't get a second meal.
That's right.
That's correct.
Correct.
Can I ask a quick, so like, but not every kid will get the hot lunch. They might get like uh sun butter and jelly.
No, they get a hot lunch.
Okay.
So there's no different meal?
There's no different meal.
I think that's part of.
The confusion is.
I think it's part of the confusion, which is little Johnny didn't get the same meal that Suzie got.
Okay.
Being shunned because he gets a sun butter.
About à la carte. And the threshold and à la carte.
Okay.
Same, they look the same.
No, he's made a point, okay, where um, the meal that we're saying that the, the child's going to get is different than à la carte. À la carte would be like, if they're going to go and get a cookie and a, and a drink, okay, as opposed to getting a nutritional meal that's, that's federally subsidized.
Has to be a full meal, including the drink.
Yes, it has to be a full meal.
On their lunch, so like, I have a neighbor, they, she brought cold lunch from home, but she wanted a milk, and she had no money on her account, and she couldn't get milk.
I need to know that information. So when that happens. Yes, I need to know like the student's name and the date it occurred, so I can get the information and I can relay back an accurate answer.
Like if the kid, because if a kid brings cold lunch, they're not allowed to then go get hot lunch or get a milk or like.
Right.
Like, those things are happening. Um, I also have a clarifying question. So with this meal program, I can donate like money to the SAU. I think that information needs to be shared in the district because there's a lot of people, there's people who even work in the district who have said they've tried to do that in the past and they haven't been allowed to. I don't think people realize we have this program.
I, I, I think it's important to note that we haven't charged for lunch for three years, and so this year, we're finally getting back to charging for lunch, so we have people without balances. So we had, we.
It is.
Yeah, we had forgot, we forgot that we had set this up until Rick asked. I, it just hasn't, we haven't had, we're now getting to the point where there are kids with lunch balances and problems are cropping up and we're having conversations. So I think you're right, Heather. Right? I, I think that people don't realize that we have it and we aren't publicizing it because we just, it's been free. And so now in January, we're starting to rack up some balances and we have some things to stream out. But I think your point, I hadn't thought of the finesse of the point that you just made, which is that if you don't have any money on your lunch account, but you don't want a whole meal, you could theoretically not get a milk, and that really bothers me. I want to fix that. Does that make sense? So those specific circumstances that parents are having, I, I just continue to say, please, don't take to Facebook. Call Matt, call me, call your principal. We, we, we'll help you and figure it out, but we, we need to know. Right? Taking to Facebook does nothing. Coming to us helps us to know what the circumstances are so that we can fix things.
Okay, so there's one other thing that Rick brought up, and he's, he wants to have it made easy so someone can make an electronic payment. Okay, so um, a donation.
Rather than coming to the SAU office and dropping off a check, we should be able to click on a link and say, I'm donating five hundred hours for kids to eat lunch.
Yep, yep. We don't have something like that set up right now, but I promised to him that I, I'm going to look into it and make it easy.
Can we give people a tax, a tax receipt so that when they make a donation, they can write it off on their taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
PayPal's easy.
I'm sorry, just to clarify that. If a child wants a cookie, they could be turned away because that's not a lunch.
That's right.
But just, I just want to say, I think that that's.
Or if they just want french fries or pater tots.
If your kid comes home and they weren't allowed a cookie, it's because cookies not lunch.
Right, right, right. There's a difference between receiving a, a USDA hot lunch and also allowing you to charge it on your account. And, and, and wanting a second lunch. You don't get a second lunch.
Right.
And you don't get.
You get the same hot lunch that everybody else is getting.
Right, but you don't get to go à la carte. You don't get to go à la carte.
Right, a second lunch.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And that for Heather with the milk really bothers me.
If your balance is.
That's correct.
And what, what balance threshold is that?
No, no, à la carte is like, is outside of the food USDA program. So there's two lines, there are two lines in the um, in school food service. The, the first one is for hot lunch. That's the one that is subsidized, subsidized by the USDA. The second one is where they can get basically whatever they want.
All four schools or just the middle school, high school?
All schools.
Okay. So I think it's like, even if you're negative, like, like, my kid was negative sixty-five cents, and he wasn't allowed to go up through the à la carte.
That's correct.
And I get a text, oh, you need to put money on my.
Well, and that's part of it. You, you have to understand that there was a point where we had thousands of dollars and we almost didn't allow some students to participate in graduation because they, their parents refused to fill out the free and reduce form. But they had a ton of money that they hadn't paid for lunches. So it's a balance, and that's what Rick and I were talking about is like, how do we create a situation where we don't have to live in that world? Like, if everybody can donate some money, especially people could just donate like regularly by setting up an automatic withdrawal, then the account could, the, it won't take a lot of money to make it so that we can not have this problem. Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
We should not be talking about our kids eating in our own community.
I agree.
That's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Jamie?
So just for clarification, this is how I understand it works, and tell me if this is correct or not. We have a hot lunch program. There's subsidies from the federal government. Some people are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Some people aren't. People that are eligible for free and reduced lunches, now we're past COVID, where everybody got it, whether they needed it or not, everybody got it. So now we're back to you're eligible for free and reduced lunches, or you're not eligible for free.
Or you didn't fill out the form.
If, then you're not eligible. You got to fill out the form to be eligible.
Correct.
So if you're, if you're eligible, then you get the free and reduced lunch. If you're not eligible, then you get billed for it.
Yep.
And then people are supposed to pay their bills. And we had, I think, a policy at one point in time, or it wasn't a policy, it was at least something that was said that we do. As we say, you can't, you can't graduate with a diploma. You will not be given a diploma unless you pay your bills. Is that still the fact?
I believe that it is.
Because we had, it, we had potential, almost had issues last year with graduation with unpaid balances.
That's correct.
All right, so that's, that's the program now. So what we're talking about is, that Mr. Edelman's bringing up is, can we enhance that somehow for people that want to contribute to people that either choose not to pay or can't pay or don't want to be in their mind stigmatized or whatever reason, they don't want to fill out their forms, or for whatever reason, they don't want to do it. What you're talking about now is to do, allow something that allows donations to be accepted to supplement for people that aren't otherwise eligible.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, it wasn't clear to me that that's, that's where we were.
Brian's, what, sorry, what Matt said is Brian implemented this in twenty twenty.
Yeah.
But then COVID hit, and we.
No, we didn't, because everything was paid.
Yeah, so, yeah, so June of twenty twenty, and kids left the school buildings in March, twenty twenty. And then it was summer, and then we came back to, because we were on the board, but I, with all the chaos and other stuff that was going, I think we all kind of forgot about it. And then, yeah, everything was free. So it became a non-issue. I think, you know, because we never actually implemented it. We approved it, but we never implemented it. It's, you know, so it's good that we're talking.
Basically, re, reapproving.
Reaffirming that it's there, and this is what we need to.
Part of this is just to address the, the buzz on Facebook.
The free, like, others, every other state surrounding us is still getting.
I know.
Hmm.
Right. We don't control that here.
Our to-do list is to publicize.
First is to get a link, get.
The electric link.
Get up, so it's electronic.
Yep, get it electric, publicize an electric link, set up automatic payments for people that want them, or make it so that if you don't want to do an automatic amount, you can just do a one-time.
Drop it off.
You can drop it off, or you could go on and put your credit card in and do a one-time donation. Yep. Also, we want to make sure for people that do it that we have a mechanism to give them a tax write-off for their donation. It's a small benefit, but it's a benefit.
Yep.
I think, and I think we just need to be careful when we're doing this, that, you know, meals are covered, milks, but when kids are running up, and like we said, the à la carts, we have to be very clear with parents that those aren't covered. You're talking a two dollar and fifty cent.
Oh, yeah.
Caffeinated ice drink, which my daughter loves to buy. Um, that is very different than getting a milk. You know, I think we have to be very clear that there are things the kids will be allowed to go negative for and things they will not be allowed to go negative.
Yeah, that's correct.
I think I was alarmed to hear that there, there are, and I, and so we're very clear. I wasn't giving any names, but there are families in our community that owe more than a hundred dollars for their kids to eat, and that is sad.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's, I'm talking about feeding kids.
Right, absolutely.
And we are very grateful for the support with this. Jim?
Oh, Jim?
Yeah, I've got a tax question for Matt. Um, my understanding of the IRS and tax deductions are is that you, it has to be, your deductions have to equal ten percent of your income, you know, tax deduction. Is that still the case, or is it different?
Uh, they, they, they changed the state and local tax deduction so much so that I don't know what the threshold is, and for me personally, I'm not eligible to take it. So I know I can give away the, the form just to make sure that everyone has it, and if they're eligible to deduct it, then they'll have the form that they need.
You're, you're, they passed the most recent law under the Trump administration that's still effective. And it goes away, I think, in twenty twenty-five. They took away a lot of your, well, they, they, they raised the standard deduction to a level that it made most people not being able to deduct. They capped state and local taxes. But in order to take care of charities, they allowed, I think, everybody, even if you're not itemizing, to have a three hundred dollar deduction for charity, if you have receipts to show that. I believe it was three hundred dollars. Um, and then other than that, your, your, your caps are your caps, and the, you know, if, if you go over your caps, you, charity doesn't, doesn't matter. It might be a ten percent limit, Jim, but this would be really for people that, let's say that's the only charity you gave. If you gave here, you could at least hit that three hundred percent or three hundred dollar number. That would be the likely biggest beneficiary for people receiving the, the receipt.
Thanks.
All right, great.
Do we need to do anything?
I don't think we do.
No, we're just have a public.
Just clarifying it.
Follow up, hopefully by the next meeting.
Yep, we'll do a follow-up, sure. And hopefully.
That everything's implemented by the next meeting.
And hopefully it will be implemented by then. I'll call the banker tomorrow to see if I can expedite.
What about the electric payment?
Feel like I can help in any, anyway.
Sorry?
If you need any help setting anything up, let me know.
Oh, I have to say TD Bank and their access is, is excellent. They, they have a, a specialist just for municipalities, and I have his cell phone and he'll pick right up.
Perfect.
Tell them I want Venmo and PayPal.
Venmo and PayPal?
Yeah, why not? Venmo's great, so easy. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's easy peasy.
And if we could get School Bucks to be on board with Venmo and PayPal, that'd be.
I can't, yeah, I just say it.
Stand up. I did.
Yeah, yeah.
Torturous. Okay, all right. I think, uh, I think we accomplished all of that. So uh, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February eighth at six PM. It says in room one forty-two.
Mine doesn't.
Mine doesn't.
We, we're meeting in one forty-two.
Okay.
Six, at six o'clock because the deliberative is at seven. And so we have a little mini board meeting.
So we're having it there, okay.
To cover anything that.
I have the updated, updated, updated.
Go to the big, big meeting in the auditorium. We'll have to use the owl camera for the one-hour meeting because they have to have everything set up in the auditorium.
Okay, so February eighth, twenty twenty-three, six PM, room one forty-two, which is down by the gymnasium, uh, the Sanborn Regional High School, followed by the first session of the annual school district meeting deliberative session at seven PM in the auditorium. Uh, filing period for positions on the Sanborn Regional School Board, Sanborn Regional Budget Committee, and the district moderator will open on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, and end on Friday, February third, twenty twenty-three at five PM. The candidate filing forms may be obtained at the SAU office from eight AM to four PM, located at the Christie Building at fifty-one Church Street in Kingston. The school district clerk will be available on the last day only to file until five PM. Every other day, it is until four PM. Uh, and now we will move into non-public per RSA ninety-one A on three, Roman numeral two, letters B.
Okay.
You. Second, second, great. All right, roll call vote.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Jamie?
I.
And myself, yes. Great. Quick five-minute break.
Thanks, JJ. Have a great night.
You, JJ.